Good evening. I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for May 26, 2015, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Here.
President?
Here.
Here.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for That brings us to awards and recognition on our agenda, and tonight we have the privilege of recognizing the Council for Exceptional Children Awards. Mrs. Camp?
My name is Dr. Mary Camp. I am the current president of the local chapter of the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children. Our chapter is Peoria Chapter Number 79. The members of Board of Education, we are very grateful on their behalf to be able to present to you the Boss's Night Awards. For those of you who are not familiar with Boss's Night, this is actually our 47th year that we have hosted an annual banquet on behalf of those who serve our students with disabilities. We recognize adults and students. We recognize adults that excel in their efforts to educate and support our students with special needs. For example, this year we recognized two local employers. They were the Hy-Vee Store on Sheridan and then Steve Dunn of the Benevolent Center, both of them who support our students' effort to get jobs. Each year, we also recognize a senior, a senior that through their efforts excelled beyond their handicap to achieve standards of excellence in their own education. This award is called the Donna Mae Schwab Award. This year was given to a graduating special education student from Jamison. His name was Chip Noor. He was unable to be here today, but I wanted to let you know that the Jamison School staff is very proud of Chip. The next award that we give out every year is called the Galinas Award. The Galinas Award for Special Education is given to a special education teacher. The award is given each year in memory of Mr. Galinas, a special education teacher who taught students at Von Steuben Middle School until his death in 1967 at the age of 34. The award is based on excellence in teaching, a sincere interest in assisting children in and beyond the school environment. This year, we had five finalists for the award. They are Janine Ripple from Peoria High, Ms. Janine Shum of Manuel High School, Mrs. Evick Barnes of Roosevelt Middle School, Melissa Kaufman of Glen Oak Primary School. The winner this year is Anna Hauser, a 7th and 8th grade special education teacher at Roosevelt Magnet School. Mrs. Hauser's nomination letter included a very long letter from a student that stated she is absolutely a great teacher. One of her co-teachers said what makes her special is that she can deal with all aspects of her students, helping them to not only learn but also to be independent. She is a true co-teacher that collaborates by helping with assessments, adaptations, attendance, discipline, and just making all other teachers' jobs easier. Another student wrote, "You have given me hope and love. I know people take you for granted, so you need to know you are greatly appreciated." It is with my honor to present to you Anna Hauser and the Special Education Teacher of the Year.
I would just like to take a minute to thank Mrs. Camp and the Council for Exceptional Children for this honor that they have given to me. It's a privilege to be able to come to Roosevelt every day and work with the children that we do, so it's very nice to be acknowledged for that, although many of us come every day and do the same job. So, thank you, Ms. Camp.
The last award goes to a boss who has exceptionally high standards of leadership and work ethic. This year's Boss of the Year is a person whose focus is the students. Through his efforts in supporting teachers and building relationships with them and between them, he helps support this focus. One student writes that he makes sure the students at Peoria High High School are safe in class on time and learning. Another student with special needs talked about the help he provides with an after-school program he created and a very interesting pie-eating contest. He is said to be cool and the best guy in the whole wide world. Another student writes that for their charity fundraiser this year, their class sponsored the principal because they wanted to give him a Bat stash, because like Batman, he is their superhero. And those are their words. It is with great pleasure that I announce this year's Boss of the Year, Mr. Brett Elliott of Peoria High High School.
Thank you. Just a few words, to be acknowledged by first-year teaching staff who at Peoria High are the best. That's right. It's a true honor. We go to work side-by-side every day with the same mission and goals, to serve our children. So, to be acknowledged and recognized by them, but even more, a binder full of pictures and letters from students, that's why we do what we do. So, it's a tremendous honor, complete surprise, great staff turnout the other night, and I do want to acknowledge CEC again, 47 years, a tremendous program, to Anna Hauser and the students who are acknowledged. Educators never get enough recognition, so this organization for 47 years has taken the time to make sure that these great educators and great kids are recognized. So, thank you.
Again, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And maybe we'll see more nominations next year. In particular, I'd like to talk about the Donna Mae Schwab Award because we would give it to a high school graduating senior in each high school. And this year, we only got one nomination, so just to put a plug out for that. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to all the winners, just another example of the fine staff we have and the great students we have, hardworking and dedicated in our district. So, we appreciate it and congratulations. Are there any announcements by Board members tonight? Dr. Lathan, did you have one?
Yes. Friday is the last day of school for the 2014-15 school year. We're also excited that we will hold our first graduation ceremony, which is tomorrow, for Jamison students at 6:00 p.m. And then Saturday, our three high schools will hold their graduations, 10:00 a.m. for Manuel, 3:00 p.m. for Richwoods, and 7:00 p.m. for Peoria High. Just a very special thank you to our entire staff for their hard work this past school year. We're ending on a positive note and getting excited about the 2015 school year, but once again, thank you to everyone for their hard work this year.
Mrs. Ross?
I do want to highlight that Leska Hinton is also a part of District 150, but they're not out until June 10th, is it?
Yes. They do have an extended calendar. Yes, ma'am. So, Leska Hinton will go another week in two days, I think, two or three days.
Mr. Bateman?
Just ask everyone for a moment of silence again. Yesterday being Memorial Day, and we had a three-day weekend, which is always nice to have, but that came at a cost of many soldiers, service members around in many wars, and that came at a severe cost of their blood. So, I'd ask for a moment of silence as you ponder and reflect on the sacrifice made by those service members and also those currently serving our country who are away from their families and separated.
Thank you for that. That brings us to district presentations. We're going to start with Engineered to Be the Best.
Dr. Kennedy, come along with our partners for our engineering debate. Yes.
First of all, I want to thank the Board President and the Board and Dr. Lathan for allowing us to come and share our excitement about our Engineering to Be the Best program that we had for the past six Saturdays this year. To my right is Sharon Lipskin. She is the Vice President for NSBE, National Society of Black Engineers, and to her right is Xavier Horton, who is also a Treasurer for National Society of Black Engineers, as well as the Student Advisor for the NSBE Junior Program. Also, both of them are Caterpillar employees. District 150 partnered with NSBE this year to provide exposure to all facets of engineering to our students on six Saturdays. We focused each Saturday on a different engineering job description. We had a total of 135 students who applied and completed the application. We averaged between 60 to 80 students each Saturday. Do you want to add anything? Yeah. So, in January, our focus was chemical engineering.
So, for each session, what we did is we had a professional speaker to come in and spend about 15 to 20 minutes presenting to the students for what was engaged in that engineering discipline, how does it pertain to their everyday life, what type of curriculum and coursework are required for that type of engineering, and then we went through learning through exploration. So, every week, we had one to two activities where the kids were engaged, hands-on, working in teams, to actually experience what it felt like to be in that discipline of engineering.
And if you look at the pictures, in the first picture to the left, my left, they were making ice cream. Is it that one? I can't see them. No. The one at the bottom, they were making ice cream, so they were being able to observe a chemical change. The one above that picture, they were actually understanding the difference between a coated and a non-coated peel, the absorption rate that goes into your system, which was something new for me to learn.
What grade levels are the kids that participated in this?
Grade 6, 7, and 8. And then in February, we focused on civil engineering, and they got to make two different types of bridges, a bridge made out of popsicle sticks and a bridge made out of straws. You want to add to that civil engineer? Xavier is a civil engineer.
I'm electrical.
No, she's the civil.
She's the civil. But it was a great time with the kids, just teaching them about some of the different concepts that go into the construction of the bridges, why it's safer than to go across the Bob Michael without it collapsing on them, so some of those different structures that go into that. Kids had a great time with being challenged in terms of trying to meet different goals. So, one of the different tests that we conducted with the straw bridges was they had to be able to support a minimum amount of weight. So, we had one bridge, I think, that held, was it 500 pennies? Yes. Held about 500 pennies. So, the students, it was just nice to see their faces light up and that they were able to meet these challenges. I think one of the big things with this program that we enjoyed so much is we made engineering accessible to them. A lot of times, students get very intimidated with the prospect of doing engineering-type work, and just showing them some of those simple concepts that go into it makes it easier for them to absorb.
And in March, we were mechanical engineering, which was really exciting. One thing that I would like to emphasize was there was a lot of competition. If you look at the picture where they're standing up on the balcony, they had to create an object to enclose an egg, a raw egg, and then they dropped it at Woodruff over there in the gym to make sure to, hopefully, their device allowed the egg not to crack. And that was really exciting with the different designs that the kids came up with. What I really enjoyed about the program, a lot of times I just sat because I was so tired afterwards, was just to see them do their, make their design, and then remake their design when they didn't think it would work. So, there was a lot of critical thinking and a lot of excitement with those kids.
And in this activity, they also got to learn about managing materials, managing budget, because for every item that they selected for their design, there was a cost associated, so they had to design something that would work within the specified budget.
And in April, it was industrial and manufacturing engineering, which was really exciting, because they had to also analyze cost effectiveness, but they also had to create an assembly line to finish, you can explain, to finish filling up their bags with candy and stuff that they got to keep. But it was really, just really exciting for them, and I mean, I wish you could have been there just to see the excitement with those kids.
I think they were probably more excited about eating the treats afterward, but for the assembly line, they had a list of instructions that they had to follow. So, for one of it, they had to make two cookie sandwiches where they took two small vanilla wafers. They actually had to spread cake icing on the inside, put sprinkles on them, put it together, and put it in a mini Ziploc bag. Then they had to count out specific assorted candies, put that in another mini plastic bag. They had to cut out a heart-shaped note and write a note from mom. And then there was one other thing that they had to put together, and they had to decide how they wanted to work together. So, as they kept going, they all started kind of sitting separately, trying to figure out, then they got more competitive, then they figured if they actually gave different people tasks, actually went from one end of the table to the other, and then eventually even standing up and communicating. It was good just to see their development through the activity.
And then May was electrical engineering.
So, electrical engineering, that's my background. So, we had a great time with this one, the kids. I think this was probably one they got the most excited about. It was a safe, a safe amount of voltage and current to work with, so we didn't have to worry about any kids getting shocked. The first activity that we actually did was building a flashlight. So, the students, they had the opportunity to really learn what it's like to be an engineer when you don't see your product work the first time. So, they learned a lot of troubleshooting skills. They didn't get discouraged. As a matter of fact, one young lady, she dealt with, like, she was there the entire time, dealt with the challenge each week, because usually when she would do the activity, it wouldn't work out the first time the right way, but it was nice seeing her actually get through the flashlight exercise, see that it wasn't going to work, but still having that wherewithal to continue fighting through and figuring out exactly what was the problem. So, with the flashlights, we actually kind of took students through step-by-step how to construct them. And then in the next challenge, they were asked to construct a Dance Revolution pad. So, in that particular activity, we didn't provide much instruction at all. We kind of wanted to give the students a chance to figure out, based on the concepts that they learned during building the flashlight, how to construct their own pad, and these students went every possible direction you could take with it. They learned about conductive properties of materials, so they learned that foil can actually conduct electricity. They learned about momentary switches and some of the different types of components that you would see on some Caterpillar machines, but just doing it in a simple design with cardboard and foil and a little bit of wire. So, just seeing them letting their imaginations run wild and how to set it up. Like, I know, actually seeing some of the kids following the activity, I know one group actually took their stuff home, and I'm hoping that they ran the battery out by now, but I know their parents probably went crazy with all the buzzer sounds going off. One kid even told me that he rigged up his door so he would know when his parents were coming down off. So, definitely had a good time with this one.
And I guess I'll add for the teachers in the room, if they decide to try this activity in class, we recommend sticking to the flashlight bulbs and not the buzzers.
Yeah, no buzzers.
I have a question.
Yes.
In talking about the various elements of engineering, we're talking civil engineering for building bridges, mechanical, electrical, and so forth, you've mentioned that there is a lot of critical thinking going on, but what actually were the requirements that the children had to have in order to be a part of this program?
A willingness to come.
That was it?
That was it.
Wow.
We just, we sent out the applications to all of the schools. They filled out the applications and they came.
And really, the applications were for transportation, because we provided transportation on Saturdays. So, we needed that for transportation.
And so, after this, how many want to be engineers?
Well, I guess we didn't survey to see how many wanted to be engineers, but we had a lot of them who asked us, you know, would we do it again? They said that they look forward to coming back next year. A lot of the feedback was the electrical was their favorite part, the growing of relationships. You saw how the students were kind of quiet the first session, but by the end, they were giving hugs, they were asking questions. I told Dr. Kennedy, I had one little guy that was questioning me about where my son was and what was he doing and when was he coming back. So, they got really, you know, they got comfortable with you, and we felt good about that. And there's also, you heard from the parents as they would pick their child up, they would share with us, like, if they had to miss a session, they were upset about it. They were waking up eagerly to attend, or we even had students asking us what did they miss and could they take the materials home to try it on their own. So, the kids seemed to really enjoy it and were really engaged.
And they had to complete a journal each Saturday that they were there, and it was funny, because, you know, you would walk around and they'd have their journal out, writing in their journal. And one thing I would like to commend the NSBE organization, because they did provide incentives and prizes each Saturday. And one little student, which I found real interesting, he told me he only came because his parents made him come. However, he was very competitive and he had a good time. So, but that was just, because, you know, you can see that look. I say, "Do you want to be here?" "No, my mama made me come." Okay, but he worked, asked questions, was interactive, so they really, those kids really had a good time, and I want to say again, thank you for allowing this.
Just overall, what was the cost of the entire program to the district?
I don't know. I didn't add it up. We bought aluminum foil, we bought batteries from the Dollar Store, we bought a lot of stuff from the Dollar Store, paper, aluminum foil, Saran Wrap. I think one day, maybe we spent about $100 to make the ice cream, but it wasn't that much. A lot of stuff we had on hand.
Understood. I just, with the question about, you know, are we going to do this, can we do this again next year, which I think we all recognize, when you get kids that are that engaged and willing to give up time on a Saturday, of all things, to come and do it.
Now, we did pay staff, additional staff, even though NSBE had between 10 and 15 members there every Saturday, and we paid additional staff. We had 10 staff that we paid to pay $26 an hour for four hours.
Could we get a roll-up on that, just, because as we look ahead?
I'll get you the total.
And make sure that we understand what the cost is, so we allocate appropriately or look for underwriting sources, you know, to support something like that.
And we utilized Woodruff Colneer Arts to provide the
Right. I was going to say that.
The way you do it and how to save money.
Very good.
Mrs. Ross?
I just, maybe I missed this, but how many students participated in total?
We had an average, you said what, about 16? An average of 60. We had 135 complete the application.
The great thing about this is, I had a son who was very strong in math and science, and so he was told all through high school, you need to go into engineering. He had not a clue what any kind of engineer did, and so he didn't wind up going into engineering, got a degree in physics. But if he would have known what a civil engineer did or what an electrical engineer did and just been exposed a little bit, it might have piqued his interest enough that one of those... So, this is a great idea, just to let the kids know what it is. And you're right, it's intimidating to think of an engineer, and they found out it could be fun, so that's a really neat part of this program.
And the NSBE participants were very interactive with the students. In fact, one, I had to tell her, "Come on now, let the kids do it," because she was excited. But, I mean, it was just really exciting and engaging for everybody that was there.
Yeah. First of all, thanks for doing this, and did you, two questions. Did you get a chance to talk about your experience preparing for and going to college, and where did you go to college?
So, I'll start. I personally didn't talk about my experience going to college because I was more on the facilitating end. So, each of the speakers that we came in, they talked about their experience in college, where they attended, how long their program was, what type of grades they needed, what classes were required in the curriculum, and then also what the potential salary could be for that discipline.
So, I know, I actually got to fill in, because we had a speaker who had a family emergency for the electrical engineering, so I filled in, and I was able to share a bit about my background with engineering, actually talking about some of my experience with almost flunking out of engineering when I first started, and how I used NSBE to get resources for studying and different things like that to help me get through college. Where I went to school, I actually went to the University of Texas in Austin. I'm originally from Dallas, Texas.
Thank you.
And she went to Florida, ain't she?
Originally from Detroit, Michigan.
And then on May 16th, we had a robot basketball competition, and I'll let you guys talk about that. That was really, I'm going to let you talk about it, but that was, that was really, really exciting, because they pitted the girls against the boys, and it was really some serious competition in there.
So, on this particular day, we actually had several stages of competition. We actually had a Kahoots Quiz Bowl, so we actually brought in some iPads, and I set up a Kahoots Quiz ahead of time, so it was just an opportunity to make sure that what we were teaching them throughout the sessions was being retained. Also, kind of trying to see exactly what they were picking up in school as far as some of the STEM curriculum, so that was definitely an exciting time. The guys, they started out slow, but they made a very good comeback at the end to win that competition. So, go guys!
It was very competitive.
Yeah, then we had, like, we had prize questions, so students won movie passes to Carmike. And then after that, that's when we had the robot basketball competition, so students got a chance to learn about simple machines with levers and fulcrums, and how to build a catapult-like system to launch a ping-pong ball into a waste basket. Like, when we usually do this, we do it where basketball goes, but my daughter's was occupied. She wasn't giving that up for the day. So, we just did it with wastepaper baskets, and they learned about precision and accuracy. So, trying to design their system for, not only for it to hit in the same spot every time, but to hit the target every time. So, they had a good time learning that, learning how to chart precision and accuracy. I think we had a little inertia to overcome in the fact that, once they figured out they could launch stuff, they were just happy. Then we had to work, we had to work with them to say, "Okay, now that you got it launching stuff, let's get it launching at the correct area on the target." So, again, guys came through strong, so guys definitely won. I'm very happy for that. And it was good just seeing the students with these creative designs, like, they came from every kind of direction with how they designed their materials. I know one set of girls designed a system that had three different launch points. One guy, one set of guys one guy, I mean, one set of guys designed kind of a reverse catapult, so, um, instead of it launching forward in the direction that you thought it would, it would actually kinda do an underhand, um, basketball shot. So, the kids were very creative, you could clearly see the growth over the past six sessions and we definitely look forward to doing it again.
And this last slide, uh, just some, um, candid shots, um, of the students. Um, the one at the bottom, those, we had a, a drawing for those kids who had perfect attendance and we had fifteen students who had perfect attendance, and so we gave them a, a nice sized box of Legos to take home and create, and we also, each student got a, um, bag, um, that was designed by Sharon and Xavier, um, with a, uh, a book inside the bag, their journal, and a, um, small Lego kit to continue working. So, all in all, this was a well, um, executed program and I appreciate you guys' help and I appreciate your willingness to allow this to occur. Any other questions?
So, just another thank you to Dr. Lathan for allowing us to partner with District One Fifty. Uh, working with District One Fifty has been a longtime goal for the CI NESBI chapter. A lot of times we'll find a lot of organizations that seem to, um, all rally around the same schools and there are a lot of kids in the city that need the same attention, so we weren't able to work with just one school, we were able to work with students from, um, schools all across the district, um, to build relationships with them. The staff was great, it was a unified team, whether it was CI NESBI, District One Fifty, Caterpillar volunteers, and we hope to have the opportunity to work with you again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, leave it down. Okay, Mr. Will Cox, then you're up.
Let me first thank you for scheduling, uh, a budget presentation after a presentation that included robot basketball and if we can, hope we can keep you as riveted as that was, that's interesting. Um, we're actually going to, um, talk about two budgets tonight. Um, first we'll talk about the two thousand and fifteen amended budget and then we'll continue our discussion with the board about the two thousand and sixteen budget and our, um, options for budget reductions for two thousand and sixteen. Okay. Um, tonight we'll, for two thousand and fifteen, uh, budget will, um, provide a financial update, um, we'll also discuss some of the effects of the two thousand and fifteen budget on the two thousand and sixteen budget. Um, we're actually gonna talk a little bit about the two thousand and fourteen budget also, or two thousand and fourteen, we now have the, um, since the two thousand and fifteen budget was initially adopted, we have the, uh, results of the two thousand and fourteen audit and that has some effect on the amended fifteen budget. Um, need for amended budget, it's usual practice for the board to amend the budget at this time of year as we prepare, prepare for year end. Um, the initial budget was developed with, um, estimates, um, without knowledge of actual revenues, um, which likely could be the case again this year when we adopt the sixteen budget. Um, in addition, there's been changes in revenues and expenditures during the year that necessitate an amended budget to be more comparable with actual expenditures as we prepare for the audit. Um, where we are now, uh, we've published, uh, public notice that the amended budget is on display, it's on the, uh, school district's website, um, we put it on display, actually on the fourteenth, we put it, um, on this slide, we put it on public display on the sixteenth, but it was actually up a couple of days before that, so it would be on public display for thirty days. Um, the board is required to hold a public hearing and we have that scheduled for June fifteenth and at that meeting, hopefully the board will adopt the amended budget for, um, two thousand and fifteen. Again, the two thousand and fifteen budget was adopted before the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen audit was complete. Um, there were certain adjustments in the audit for two thousand and fourteen that actually decreased the beginning fund balance for two thousand and fifteen by two point nine million dollars. Um, and that's important, it's kinda like your checkbook, you have a beginning of the month balance, you have money coming in, money going out during the month, and at the end of the month, then you have an ending balance, which then becomes your beginning balance for the next month. So, when the fourteen audit, um, had those adjustments, it did affect the fund balance at the end of two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, we've talked a little bit about this with the board, um, we've had a decrease in, um, state grant funding and we also had, um, local tax revenues that were, that came on, in, under budget. Um, in addition, we had some fifteen fiscal year two thousand and fifteen expenditure adjustments that needed to be included in the amended budget. Here's the, uh, my own, I don't know, okay. Um, here's the, uh, budget that's, uh, posted on the website and here in the office. We always talk about the, uh, operating funds as being the, uh, funds that we usually focus more attention on and that's, that's this side, the left side of the, the thing, the, uh, slide here. Um, where Mark was talking about the ending July two thousand and fourteen, uh, fund balance at seven point eight million dollars right there, in the original budget, it was like ten point six million, that's the two point nine million difference, so the beginning fund balance and the operating budgets were less and we, we talked about this more in the, uh, audit presentation in the fall, but that's one big change on this slide. I understand it's too small to really look at and, you know, it is on the website for people to study in more detail. Um, and, uh, so that's a big difference and then the, uh, uh, we'll, we'll go over the changes in the expenses and the revenues over expenditures, you know, in more detail in a few minutes, but this thirteen point six million is in, an increase over the twelve point two million we'd had in the original budget, so things have, uh, gotten a little worse over the course of the year and since we have to, more, more reason to, uh, talk about budget for next year. Um, anything else? Oh, and then the other point on this one I have is the, the O and M deficit, you know, you talk about, you know, the ad fund being a big concern, it is a big concern and it's ten million dollar deficit, but that is a far, uh, as a percentage of the total expenses, it's not as big as the O and M, uh, deficit as a total, as compared to the total expenses, so both funds need a lot of, uh, care and, and attention because of the deficits that we've been running. Uh, this is a, uh, again, it's too small, I understand, to see, it's, uh, all the detail of the differences from the original budget to the current budget that we're presenting tonight and then we'll have, uh, the budget hearing on in a couple of weeks. Um, all right. Um, here's the, uh, uh, first detail we wanna talk about, the, uh, find, the state revenues that, uh, last month, the state voted to decrease, uh, uh, their expenses by two point two five percent, so even though most of these we had already spent the money for in anticipation of getting it, we are getting less money, so, uh, we have general state aid is eight hundred ninety-four thousand, even though it had been prorated to eighty-nine percent before, now it's been prorated down to eighty-seven percent, so we're gonna get eight hundred ninety-five thousand less than we expected before. The first number there is the general state aid we get for, as part, for running the, uh, safe school, the regional safe school for the ROE, um, so that has gone down. Uh, special-
Just a second, so if we just, I think, go back?
Yes.
That last August and then September, when the board voted on the budget, we had the preliminary amount, then a month ago, we were reduced again by the state, so we had an amount that we were working based on what the state had promised us.
Correct.
They then took a vote to reduce the amount that they had promised us last fall.
Right.
So, that's why you see now the change.
Yeah.
And then we're expected to do-
That came from the state making a decision.
And then we're expected to do an amendment now at this late date-
Right.
-with that, after many of the expenditures would've already taken place.
Although we had planned for the to utilize of funds at eighty-nine percent, just thinking about general state aid.
Right, and we did get a hold harmless amount for eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, so, you know, it's not as bad as it could've been, which is typical state funding for you, they always give you the worst-case scenario and then they make you feel glad that you, it's not as bad as it could've been. But then we have things like special education, uh, these four here are all special education. Obviously, we don't know this until April, we've spent all the money, assuming that we were gonna get this money, and then in special education situation, you, you have to do a maintenance of effort, so you have to spend as much this year as you spent last year per student and if not, you get penalized even more, so, uh, so even though we did not get this money, we will still have to spend it out of general state aid or reserves or something because we have to spend as much per student as we did the year before. So, it's these kinda challenges and it, and like I said, we, you know, in the, in the, in the final result, it's not as bad because we did get the hold harmless, but these special ed things, we're gonna have to, you know, be careful with the next couple of years 'cause maintenance of efforts will, uh, be a problem, but, um, all right. We got a lot of slides, so we're gonna move, move ahead, so. Um, this is the, uh, budget adjustment for local revenue when we originally, um, did the, uh, uh, budget last summer, uh, we obviously don't do the lev, we do the budget in the summer, we do the levy in December, we don't know EAV until the spring, for usually April, so, uh, the net result though is that four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we got less in local tax revenue this year than we had originally budgeted did, so that's a, a difference in the operating funds of that four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's just because we use estimates in the summer and we don't really know the real numbers until later, so. All right, changes to federal revenues. Um, one of the things we do with federal revenues is, especially for Title I and Title II, is that we budget in the summer for eighty-five percent of our expected allotment, 'cause we don't know from the fed, federal government yet exactly what we're gonna get, so they budget eighty-five percent, they, uh, that's included in the original budget and now in the final budget, it's what we really expect to spend. Um, the important part about that is that there's expenses that match the revenue, so even though revenues have gone up, expenses have gone up also. Um, uh, so that's, that, uh, these are some major changes, actually if you look, um, the federal revenue, if you've added up, it's like one point two million of federal revenue and then, you know, you got one point two million in, you know, ma, mainly purchase services and then the ID, DEA funding, uh, we're doing the Jameson construction, which is in the budget now. And then the health center expense I have there, that, that grant was not in, even though we expect to get the grant, the grant was not in the original budget because the final numbers had not been identified to us. And as we talked a few weeks ago, we increased, uh, for school buses, you know, that's an investment in transportation, there's a four-year payback expected on those buses and then once, you know, that four years will save money 'cause they're cheaper to run and they run gasoline instead of, uh, diesel, so there'll be savings going forward with that purchase. And then this is just another slide that kinda details the, uh, the operating budgets and the, the challenges that we're dealing with that we can, you know, that's not sustainable over the long terms, so that's why we're going to be talking shortly about next year's budget and the, uh, possible cuts from that. Okay, so that was a quick snapshot of the two thousand and fifteen amended budget and again, we'll be presenting the, um, the amended budget to the board for, um, approval at the, uh, June fifteenth meeting. Um, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the FY two thousand-
Any questions on the amended budget? Mr. Boyd?
This is going back a long way, the audit adjustments that took place, could you sort of characterize what, what the difference was there? You know, that was, that was the end of last year, beginning of this year adjustment?
Right, there was a two million dollar federal revenue that we had budgeted, uh, that didn't come last year and then, um, but it didn't have matching expenses, so it was, it was, uh, uh, that was a big part of there and the other errors are, are not errors, but the other differences are mainly, uh, uh, the way the accruals happened and, you know, that weren't fully understood, you know, when we did the amendment.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions on the amended before we go on? Because I wanna make sure we keep these two separate, they're two separate things.
Right, correct, so we're gonna move on to the two thousand and sixteen budget now and this is our continuing discussion with the board, um, we did this in March, at the March meeting, we presented an initial list of expenditure reduction options, um, so we'll do a financial update now, um, again, some of the things that happened in fifteen are affecting the two thousand and sixteen budget, um, so we'll continue our discussion of, um, the expenditure reduction options and budget development. Um, just to kind of, uh, refresh everyone's memory of where we are in this process, um, we, we started in November and, um, we spent about four months really identifying, um, uh, programs, um, developing saving es, savings estimates, um, discussing prioritizing, prioritizations, and developing, um, reduction recommendations that we then brought to the board for this first time in March and we, um, uh, had discussion with the board on those recommendations in March. Um, we're now in May, we're gonna present a budget update again and, and continue the discussion on the budget reduction options. Um, in July, uh, we really hope that we have a clear, um, estimate of what state revenues will be at that point. Typically, the general assembly ends the end of May, um, some are saying that the session could go as late as August this year, um, so it's anybody's guess when they're actually going to finish, but hopefully in July, we'll have some better estimate of what state revenues are going to be for, um, the fiscal year that actually starts, um, July first. Um, we also hope to get some closure on some of the reduction options so we can, between July and August, um, we can actually prepare a budget for the board to, um, start studying in August and then adopt in September, so that's kinda the schedule from now until, um, the board adopts the sixteen budget in September. Um, again, just to talk on some of these terms again, in two thousand and fifteen, we talked about a beginning fund balance and this kinda lays it out very simply how these numbers work together. Um, you have a beginning fund balance, um, so that's basically the accumulation of your checkbook balance over a period of time and where you are at the end of one month and the beginning of the next month. You have revenues and expenditures during the month and you have a difference between revenues and expenditures, which is a deficit or a surplus depending on, in this case, we have, um, in two thousand and fifteen, and this is education fund, we have a deficit of ten million dollars for the year, and then our accumulated deficit, or our ending fund balance is five point nine million, so we talk about some of these terms and I thought it might be helpful just to lay this out to see how beginning fund balance really affects the ending fund balance. If you change that beginning number of four point three million, if you add another million deficit on that or a surplus, it would affect the ending fund balance. And again, the beginning fund balance is critical to budget development, um, we've updated financial information as it becomes available and, uh, I guess just, uh, again, a bear of good news, but the overall financial condition of the district has worse, has worsened over the course of the last fiscal year. Um, and these are, Mike talked a little bit about these, these are the ending fund balances. For fourteen, the original budget had a surplus of ten point six million in fourteen and it audited with a surplus of seven point eight million. Estimated two thousand and fifteen ending fund balance, uh, the original budget was a deficit of one point six million and the amended budget, it will be five point nine million.
And that's mostly due to loss of revenue or, or less revenues than what we anticipated for the most part?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you point three, three, you know, three hundred thousand is state funds, five hundred thousand is property taxes, you know, four hundred thousand is O and M, you know, changes within the operation and maintenance fund and, you know, a hundred thousand is transportation, so that one point three million difference, uh, I mean, even though it looks, it, it is four point two million, but two point nine million is from the audit from last year, then the other one point three million difference of the current year thing is that mostly revenue changes, so, it's, it's, expense changes have not been that great. Okay, so based on the updated information, um, since the March board presentation, again, the district's, uh, financial deficit for the current year, two thousand and fifteen has worsened, um, and the financial position of the district to begin next fiscal year is declined.[1797.88]
And the financial position of the district to begin next fiscal year is declined. Again, just some assumptions. I think we know that we adopted a 2015 budget with accumulated annual deficit. Early focus on reducing expenditures to address the deficits is what we've been working on, particularly in education fund. We're currently assuming level revenues or revenues level with 2015. That will, that estimate will change after state funding particularly is finalized. And again, as I mentioned, the legislature is scheduled to finish in a couple of days, but that's up in the air. It's, as usual, they're not playing nice in Springfield. Again, we talked a little bit about this. We presented the budget options to the board in March. We discussed those with the board in April. We heard general board consensus on certain reduction options. We had individual interest in other reduction options. And since the March presentation and the April discussion, we've gotten additional input from the board, from principals, from staff and union representatives. So, you know, we have some things to discuss in a second here. But again, the initial set of reductions that we brought to the board were brought to the board after about four months of vetting, discussions, refining numbers. And so some of the things, the input that we're getting now is going to take a little bit of time to vet again. This summarizes the proposed reductions that we brought in March. They totaled 9.1 million, and it included 2.4 million in, we labeled them additional reductions. This was the closure of Woodruff and the Knoxville Center. And the proposal that we're bringing to you now, we've taken those reductions out. So the total reductions that we're proposing now are 7.3 million with a difference of 1.8 million. We've got some additional reductions that we're proposing, and we'll talk about those in a second. This is a reconciliation. I again apologize that numbers are a little bit small. But again, we started at 9.1 million. We've taken the Safe School, the Contemporary School, and Knoxville Center off of the reduction list. We've added a clerical position at Peoria High. We will have a vacant IIO position that we've added to the reduction list. Eliminate charge, or IB testing. Eliminate extra pay at Treewin and Woodruff. And eliminate PD stipends at Treewin and Woodruff. And eliminate universal leadership team pay. And eliminate meeting food costs. So we've added about $570,000 to the list, and we've removed 2.4 million. So our May proposed budget reductions are $7.3 million.
What we did next?
Quick question. On some of those things, like the extra pay and the PD stipends and some of those things, do those not have to be negotiated?
They were MOUs that are expiring. Those MOUs are expiring. And so they're coming to the end. And so we would have to agree to renew them at those rates. And then eliminate, what's his IB test? And that's paying for the IB tests that we pay currently for students to take the tests.
That was my question on the IB test. You're saying it's the district's been paying for the students to take the IB test?
Yes.
And so how will they, how will they be able to take them now?
They'll have to pay, it'll go back to what we traditionally, we did before we started paying for IB and AP tests. They would pay for them on their own.
And that cost?
We've been paying for them since we had IB.
No, 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 no. We only started paying for them three years ago.
And the cost per student? What are we transferring onto a family?
Per test, it's about $65.
$120 per test.
$120 per test. Per test. And some students will take several tests.
Got a question here. The vacant IIO position, is that due to retirement or?
Retirement, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then what we did next was we put it back in the format that we had used the last time we presented and put the new items in here and categorized it. So we have the administration area, and that's where we put in eliminating the IIO position and then the clerical additional Peoria High position to come up with our new totals for the administrative area. But we have maintained the other amounts exactly as they were, breaking it out between the programs and staffing reductions. Okay. Then the next slide is the--
Could you give us an idea of, under administrators, what positions those are?
Yes.
Under that top one?
Yes. We had six assistants, sorry, six assistant principals. And we had the director of Medicaid in that grouping over there on the top right. And then the curriculum facilitator slash regional techs, that was 5.5 positions. And then the one clerical at Manul, the one IIO, and then the one at Peoria High.
Question. What are directed enhancement funds?
Okay. Those were the superintendent slash IIO funds that were split between them, and it was for funding of needs at the buildings. This is a 50% cut in that. And what it might be is anywhere from training that was determined necessary by the IIO at a certain building for, you know, areas that are lacking. It might be computers where they're having more breakdowns than expected, or it doesn't handle the software in a particular lab. It's just an area where they have a little flexibility in order to get or to deal with the building needs throughout the year that were not perhaps previously budgeted. If the technology budget doesn't have, you know, that in there for that particular year, it's just a way to have a little bit of flexibility for that IIO to address.
And also, we had, you know, several presentations on fine arts. Can you tell me at what, this proposed budget, at what level would we still continue to have fine arts?
Oh, for fine arts, you mean up there at the 63,000? That was just eliminating the coordinator half-time and having to take it over. When we talk about other administrators having to take certain areas over, it's having another person take over those duties and eliminating the position. But it does not affect the program.
So say, who is another person?
Another person would be the person that is doing the homeless and the college-bound, and that area is taking on also the fine arts piece. Okay. On the next slide, that is the direct instruction area. And again, we kept the areas the same, but I'll go ahead and review the main points on that. But first, starting with eliminate the 30-hour PD stipends for Treewin and Woodruff, and then also eliminating the stipends in general for being at the buildings. Treewin and Woodruff were the additions to this page. But we still have the areas with accelerated reader. We have made changes or we have figured the direction we're going on that.
Another question.
Sorry?
I'm going ahead. But going back to the stipends, because that was on the other page, will we have to allow those teachers to opt back out of those buildings if one of the incentives for them to go to the buildings was the stipend?
From the, let me see, but it was original, from my understanding, it's an MOU. When the MOU expires, that was it. Because that was in addition to, it wasn't a part of the original contract. So our understanding is, once MOU expires, that it's not a change in program. And that is going to allow them to opt out for, and I'm trying to correct the please correction. It looks for me or somewhere.
Okay.
She was on elevator.
Yeah. I was on accelerated reader. It was a rude leader.
These were the original recommendations on the board.
Yes. And with accelerated reader, I just wanted to point out that we have reviewed that and discussed it with all of the principals. And it was determined that they, I want to say, almost everyone, perhaps a couple of schools, did not decide to proceed with it. But otherwise, that they're putting it in their Title I budgets, that they did feel that was important. And so that is where it was moved to. Paxton Labs, again, just to repeat on that one, that we were at 259,000, and we are coming down to 78,500 for the new year. And all that incorporates in is one additional lab that we had already predetermined we were doing. And then just simply the supplies needed. Trying to think of the word for--
Consumables.
Consumables. There you go. The consumables in the lab. The field trips, I wanted to point out, should be probably more like a $56,000 savings after we've looked at that. And that would be just maintaining the one, the halt, field trips. So that'll be adjusted up slightly from what we see there. And again, the reminder that the textbooks, that would be leaving 300,000 left in the textbook area by making that cut. I also want to point out on the right-hand side that we do fully intend to stay with the cuts that are outlined there, that we feel that those are necessary, and we did discuss and review those. We don't see that there's a way to avoid that. As we've said, that a lot of the cuts still have to be in the personnel area.
Question. Okay. It looks like most of it stayed the same. So information that was submitted by the principals, you're saying support these type of cuts? Or when they submitted their information, was it considered at all?
Yes, it was that they, and we'll kind of get into that a little bit later, the list that they gave us. We do have that so that we can present it up there as well. But yes, we did consider that, and we put what we could in immediately. But other items are going to be for a little further study, just meaning it could be just a very few months, or it could take up to a year when we get into fine arts areas and other areas that we really, really need to look at more closely before we can move ahead on that. But we did put out there, every idea that was given to us that has any feasibility at all was considered, and is out there, and will be more further exploration into those areas will be forthcoming.
Okay. I'm just trying to get, wrap my arms around the fact that you're talking about, you're recommending, see, it's up to the board, you're recommending class size adjustment or class sizes to be in K1 up to 27. And at the same time, you're recommending that teacher aide positions be cut by 14. So I'm just not sure whether we are just going to be warehousing kids and just, you know, in a holding cell, sort of. What can one teacher do? I mean, anybody consider, what can a teacher do with 27 kids in the room, K through 1? What can they do? Have we asked teachers this?
Well, with the teacher aides, that was some special ed, and it was a few regular ed teacher aides that were within that. But we had gone through each building to determine what their needs were. So it was determined, you know, what in each classroom, looking at the class sizes and the needs within those rooms, realizing that a lot of those are smaller class sizes for the special education students. But we did take it all into consideration, and we did discuss it with the special ed department.
Okay. But that was special ed. But we're not talking about, talking about K through 1. Most of those classes don't have a teacher aide in them already. And we're, and you're saying that class sizes could go up to 27?
We felt that we could not increase the higher levels that already allow it to go, the class sizes to go up to 27. We didn't see that raising that up any further within a high school setting was beneficial either. I think the feeling was that none of these are popular or even the right thing to do educationally. But at the same time, we feel forced into that situation that that's where we stand right now.
I personally think we've got to go back to the drawing board. Okay?
All right. Then for the next slide. This is the curriculum and training area. And this is where we have eliminated, again, the wording not quite right, IB testing, but paying for the IB testing was the item added here. Otherwise, the items follow with what we had before. We talked about needing less training in the IB area. That's why that has gone down. That we were decreasing the training supplies needed for Avid. That we were eliminating the DIBELS reading 3 testing and adding PSAT and SAT to that That we feel like areas like Math Forward, for example, are fully implemented and that we're ready to move away from that. So there wasn't other adjustments within here. We felt like we had taken those down as much as we could, but still able to implement those programs. 95% group is another one where we're basically doing away with it because we are at that point, that it has been a multi-year program that we feel that we've been adequately trained in that area. Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Eliminate IB testing, does that mean you're, I mean--
Paying for the test.
Just paying for the test.
Paying for the test.
Yes. And then on the right, we have the interventionist that we have talked about before, that that would be the number eliminated. Although, again, that number can vary just slightly because a couple of the Title I schools are looking at how they could adjust their funds to allocate--
Use their Title I funds--
Yes, for more.
Back on the IB testing, have we done anything to analyze the families that are in these IB programs?
No.
And evaluated their ability to pick up that cost, especially if we're talking $120 a test, over a number of tests? A lot of these families come from, you know, are not necessarily out of high-income areas. So I don't physically see that a lot of these families are going to be able to pay for that.
And originally, that's why the recommendation was made several years ago, to go to pay in it. But when you sent us back to the drawing board, told us to go back to the table, we started, once again, putting additional things on the table. It is not what we want to do, but these are things that we're presenting to you, and then we will take it from there.
In terms of success of our IB students that are taking these tests, what level of them are achieving acceptable marks that would allow them to gain college credit, that kind of thing, on these tests?
I'm going to put her on the spot because she's here, so you have to take advantage of that. But if you go back to the MS Clark, if you want to jump in, please, go back to the achievement information we presented to you last October.
I'm trying to remember.
Our students were meeting or exceeding the national average as it relates to their passage for IB tests.
World average.
Well, excuse me, the world average.
I think it would be a mistake.
To withdraw?
Yes.
Withdraw the funding for the testing. And she did share that clearly before.
In other words, our students are achieving more than acceptable marks in those areas.
More than, and I wasn't prepared to get into that, but I'd say over 85% of the average.
Are those kids going on to schools where they actually get to use the credit? Because I know there's some schools who don't, who don't give you credit for it. So are those kids, are you seeing them go on to schools where they can use the credit?
This year, right now, all of them, who's going to have, and that's just by choice, because they're going in missionary work for a year. So the whole--
Do you know how many diploma students will graduate on Saturday? Sorry, but--
Well, we won't find out until July if they were actually at home.
Okay.
The tests have been set off to be nationally graded, but 38 are--
Being recognized on Saturday far as the graduation program? You said 38?
I guess, following up on President Wolfmeyer's question, do we know how many of those students that are going on to college are actually receiving credit for the IB classes there that they've taken?
Travis can probably--
Because that's, I'm with President Wolfmeyer, that we're hearing mixed messages on acceptance of IB testing at college levels and recognizing those as accepted classes--
If I'm not--
For college credit as they come into, or come into college, so.
And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Bobey has presented to parents and students the different colleges that accept those IB courses. And I know that was a past presentation that I sat in on, so we can pull that information for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. In the other support area, this is where we inserted the eliminating the pay for ULT meetings and looking at it as a situation that the teachers would volunteer their time to be a part of the leadership team of their building. And then eliminating food catering costs for the various meetings.
Excuse me. How likely is it that teachers would volunteer their time to be at a ULT meeting? How likely is that? Or are we just eliminating ULT altogether?
I think that over time, there would be the interest, that's what we're coming to.
It'll be school by school.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm just wondering how, I'm a numbers person. Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering how, I'm a numerous person.
And if you want your voice to be heard, I guess, and it's important to you, show up at meetings like that, where.
Pardon me?
That if it's important to you, and you want to have your voice heard, that you would show up, is what we hope for at those meetings, that that's a way to have your voice heard.
What is included in the food, food catering costs?
This group, this, this food here, this would just be various teacher meetings, and various leadership meetings within that, so it's just saying if we just cut that out completely.
Does that include our little, our little meal we get?
No, the meal for the board.
Is it a recommendation?
We had that, but it's not bad.
The meal that the boards receives is, comes free from Sedexo, so, yeah.
But is 50,000, is 50,000 all?
I mean, it wouldn't hurt us, not anyway.
Is 50,000, I mean.
That's all we get.
I thought we heard a much higher number that we spend during the year than $50,000.
I think what we did is we broke it down between administrative principal meetings and then other meetings.
So it's going to show up somewhere else, too?
Yeah, I think it's between the two, and that that was brought up, too, again, later.
Well, the meal costs, I thought we had heard some other time that was much more than $50,000, and Carl's saying that'll show up in another slide.
Yeah, that we were just splitting it between, just saying general staff and then administrative meetings.
But included in extra duty, I hate to answer all the questions, but your name.
For extra duty, that was the, the schedule.
Schedule C.
C.
25%.
Coach, sorry, coaches, clubs, sponsors.
So how, how are you? How is that being, I mean, how is that being reduced by 284,000 dollars?
Well, we're looking at that, that represents 25%, and what, again, that would be a principal recommendation, and what they had said is you need to be looking at areas where there's less interest in that. You know, whatever the extracurricular is, less interest areas need to be dropped, you need to be really looking at that, so that's, you know, and that's something we, all along, had said.
So is this an overall, this isn't an overall cut in Schedule C, because that would have to be negotiated?
That has to be negotiated, that's correct.
So, what that really represents is 284,000 dollars in extracurriculars that are probably going to be dropped.
Right.
And, and I, I don't know, I think I would have to see what those extracurriculars are before I could, I, you know, if you, I don't know if you've talked to principals yet or not, or how you came up with, with that figure, but.
Yeah, what's the?
I would certainly need to know what extracurriculars we're talking about.
What's detailed behind that?
At my school, if that's what's, what's happening.
Yeah, and then, go ahead, Lynn, you do, you go ahead, and then I've got another question about that.
Okay. Could you please explain to me on the Old Bradley Community, which is now Family Core and Family Core with a one-half reduction? What's the correlation of those two?
Okay, the one program, that Old Bradley Community, that was one that came through Bradley University, they had their own grant, and so there was no cost to the district at all. Then we had to pick it up for one year, we just said not had to, that we chose to pick it up for one year to continue the program.
Family Resource Coordinators is their title. Those Family Resource Coordinators at Treewind and Manuel and Harrison.
And then we moved them over to Family Core as part of that program, then?
Well, we didn't move them over, Bradley, let me just clear that up, Bradley, when the grant ran out, Bradley contracted or entered into an agreement with Family Core for Family Core to assume responsibility for those positions, and then the district would continue to pay for them for additional year, which was this past school year. So Bradley and Family Core worked it out, but they are Family Core, but we needed to separate them because they were part of an original grant, and this goes back under the full-service community schools, I think it goes back about five to six years, the first was Community Builders, then it moved to Bradley, and now it's moved to Family Core. But the grant has ended, so if we continue with it, we will be paying for the funding.
Second would be, my second question would be, of course, near and dear to my heart, Elite, and just remembering at our last board meeting that Mr. Cannon came before us and said that there could be a possibility of some funding.
And Mrs. Ross and I can speak to that in a little bit. We did meet with him, so we can speak to that. And there's a sheet in your packet, too, that is his proposal.
Okay.
So, well, yeah, we can do that now if you want. If you look in your packet, do you not want to do that now? Okay, that's fine.
So we, so to go on with Elite, that we left it in there as a cut for the district because there was discussion of other funding.
What was that you said?
That there were.
I can't hear you because your mic.
Okay, I'm sorry, we, we left it on there, Elite, because there was discussion of other funding possibilities, and that we still saw it as a cut for the district.
There wasn't, okay.
So at this point, we still have it in there. Otherwise, then, we have the counselors that we had before on the side that represents two, building monitors that may vary by about five, is what we came up with, that there may be five in high-need areas, but otherwise, that the building monitors stand.
How many of the teachers there?
That represents 22 up there.
22, but we talked about, we talked about five schools possibly would still need them out of the 22. But then also, some of that would be offset by some other staff that we've hired.
Okay, I want to go back to that. I noticed in the hiring, with some of those monitors, we're still, we've hired them back under a different category, but it's, so it's really not a cut?
It is a, it is a cut, but the, the, another category was based on the direction from the board to hire those positions, but it's still a cut in this area, but that increase is in another area, that is correct, but that's based on what you all directed us to do. Those new positions were already there.
Yeah.
So we're not adding those.
Because remember, we have not backfill the positions as they became vacant.
So positions were still there, exactly, that's what you're saying, is that the positions were still there, we didn't add anything?
If you look at over time, those positions, as people left the organization, and then because of the fact we were in some negotiations, we did not fill those positions, and now we're at a point that we're filling those positions, but the savings here from building monitors is totally separate than the positions that you're being asked to approve.
Okay, but we talked about this before, those positions, the positions that we, that you said would have not been backfilled, came out of a different fund.
Tort fund.
Came out of the tort fund, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't have, maybe I'm wrong.
Security, security is paid out of the tort fund, yes.
Right. So what I'm saying, those positions that.
That they were called back to were in a different fund.
A different fund.
Yeah, they're going to be in the SRO fund. These are, it's not the SRO, it's not these building monitors.
I'm talking about the SRO funds.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, security is paid out of the tort fund, so this is education fund decreases. So if you hire them in, as a security, in a security union, then they will be paid out of the tort fund instead, so that is correct.
So that's that building monitor, that is not being picked, that is not being resold, that's coming out of it. You set up, you probably set five of those, eight of my compensation, and then you just have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Before you leave that slide, can we go to legal fees? Can you tell me what's included in that?
That's an estimate of what we think we're going to, our contracted legal fees will be reduced, it's, it's an estimate right now, due to having in-house counsel.
Isn't that a partial amount, though? This is what you save out of the ed fund?
Mm-hmm.
There would be more savings out of the tort fund, correct?
Mm-hmm. This next slide, we're going to switch to the operation and maintenance fund. As Mike mentioned earlier, the, the actual deficit in the O and M fund is, is actually worse than the education fund, if you look on a percentage basis. In March, the March 23 presentation, we identified budget reduction goal of 17 positions totaling 910,000. At the May 12 meeting, the board authorized reduction in force of 14 custodial positions, and we have an additional three positions that will remain vacant for a total of 17 positions, and that's what we brought to the board in March. The board, by contract with Local 8, were required to negotiate the impact of these position reductions, and we're continuing with those negotiations, they're ongoing. So, in, so that kind of brings a, kind of conclusion to the actual budget reduction options, but addition to those, we received numerous suggestions that are worthy of consideration, but require further study. As I mentioned earlier, when we started this last fall, we went through about a four-month process to determine the impact on students and operations of the cuts that we presented to you initially. We determined potential savings, and then we prioritized options, and that turned out to be a pretty lengthy process. So some of the things that we're going to talk about now, we've kind of categorized these in short term, which we view as likely one to six months, and longer term, probably over six months, to study some of these options. And I think to review these options is really important for our continuing budget development. But what we're going to present to you now is the entire list of suggestions, and there's varying levels of feasibility, or implementation, or even priority, so I'm going to put that caveat out there before we actually go through the list of these things.
So what we did was we took and split them into categories again, so we have the administration area, and in this area, everything is considered a short-term study, off to the right there. We, we'll just sort of pick out a couple of different items within, because as we said, we have to do a further study to really see, is it feasible, how would the workload have to shift, you know, what would we need to do, but one area, eliminating the 12-month principal contracts, realizing that that is just three, the three high school principals, not real feasible with the time and effort over the summer, and it wouldn't be a lot of change, but what we want to do is really investigate each of these areas, and that would be an example of one to look at.
Okay, I got a question, then, would it be a salary cut for principals if they went from, if, I'm assuming they go back to what they had before, which was like a 10-month contract, 11-month contract?
No, that would not be the recommendation, and I'll tell you why, for the three high school principals.
It doesn't say high school, it says.
It was only three that have them, it's high school principals, for 12-month contract for principals. It's the high school principals, because the buildings are open year-round, due to all the extracurricular activities, and the reason it would not be a recommendation on the salary is, and we've had this conversation for years now, our high school principals are already underpaid, and we've talked about, even though we're in the middle of financial crisis right now, that we, in order to be, continue to be competitive and recruit people, we need to be increasing the salaries. And so even if we went to where they go to a 215, they're only 260 now, that would not be a reduction, all we would be doing is taking away their vacation days, let's see, they get, what they would take, it's 20 days for vacation, and so they receive the 20 days of vacation, if I'm not mistaken, and then they're working those extra days, and so when, at Christmas break, for example, if they want to be out, they take vacation days, just like the rest of us here at the central office, but it would not be a savings. That was one of the things.
That's what I was going to ask, would it be a savings?
That was put on that list, but I'm just, I'm going on the record to say, and you have, of course, again, I just make recommendations, that that would not be a recommendation from me to reduce the high school principal salaries.
Okay.
Because we have some assistant principals and some of our middle school principals earning just as much as our high school principals.
But, but the reason for that is the length of time that they've been with the district is not, has nothing to do with the ability of the high school principals.
Well, and, and, right, it's nothing, but in fairness to the building principals, the people who choose, and that was some, if you go back to some of the writings of some of the principals that submitted information, for years, you froze off-schedule employees and principal salaries, while assistant principals continued, because they were part of the, they got the increases with the teachers, they stayed, so those people who are assistant principals or deans, they kept going up the salary schedule.
But that wasn't years, Dr. Lake.
It was several years, at least, how many years of frozen salary?
Three.
Three years. So three years makes a difference when someone is frozen, and they're not moving up the steps.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, that's the reason why, but we've also had a conversation, at least for five years, I can only talk about me, overall, we've talked about our administrative salaries for principals and assistant principals, because we have some people who, in buildings, where we have novice principals, they have staff members earning more than them, and they are the ones that we are holding accountable for everything as it relates to their schools. So I have to go on record saying that we still, if we want to be competitive and not get people, and I shared this with you a month ago, when we were looking at placing new principals, one of the new principals said to me, "Am I going to have to take a salary cut if I move from an assistant principal position to a principal position?"
So on that note, what we're trying to do then is put figures to these and talk about priorities as well, but at this point, we're saying that these are items where we'll get right on that, we'll be able to discuss this as a group, and get numbers put to this, priorities, and then we can discuss them further.
So on the short term, what, how relevant is, is what the results of this to the budget that has to be submitted?
Can I, let me answer that, the.
You said six months.
Okay, well, we'll talk a little bit at the conclusion about where we, where this puts us for our 2016 budget, and the budget crisis, or the budget deficit, will not be solved in 2016. We've put, we put, even if all the recommendations we put on the table were implemented, we would still end 2016 with a budget deficit. So budget development and trying to get the district back into balanced budget is going to be a multi-year proposition, and these things give us additional thoughts, or different, additional suggestions on what we can be working on, maybe to implement during '16, maybe these will be things that are going to be implemented next year, and FY '17. Some of these, again, some of these may not even be feasible, like the one that the superintendent was talking about, eliminate 12-month principal contracts, that's going to be a very, very short study, because.
And some could be just over the summer, and we would be able to implement them, and then others, as Mark said, it might be further into the year, or into the following fiscal year.
Okay, and as you, as you look at designing these teams, I, I've asked a couple of times that we establish a finance committee, and I think this is a good time to establish a finance committee that includes those people with the expertise, we need to think outside the box, and be able to look at some of these things.
The next. For compensation, we have a lot, well, one area, the very first area, what we've already talked about, is less of the committee pay, and other areas within that, there's the teacher-for-teacher, there's a lot of, of good areas that we can look at here and see if there's a possibility for cuts, but again, what we want to do is put the numbers with them, and this is just putting it out there, that these are some of the compensation areas.
And this will, some of these things will have to be negotiated?
Yes, they will.
And so all of these things are not necessarily things that staff has even come up with, these are all the suggestions that have come into you.
Right, we're just giving you, right.
Whether from principals or staff, or the public, or other, or board members, okay.
This is a laundry list of things that have been suggested, and again, we're making no judgment on these, it's just really a list that we're presenting to the board.
Okay.
Then the next area is the curriculum extracurricular. You'll see at the bottom, it has the longer-term items, that would be one of the examples there, where, and again, that somebody out from a building, again, put in about eliminating chorus or foreign language music, that's not something that came from central administration, this is just some ideas that came in from buildings, so we put those on there for a longer-term study to understand really what's behind those comments, and to see how feasible they are. And then, operations. Wanted to point out that we are already doing the, the delivery item there, the third one down, as far as trying to be very conservative, and really plan out our trips, and the one above it, we could go ahead and bring the maintenance-type orders out to the buildings, again, trying to come up with an absolute schedule, and again, that would save money, but how much, we still have to figure that going forward, and come back with amounts.
Mr. Crawford?
Just a brief comment on curriculum, I think it's understood, but I hope in the years to come, when you consider these cuts, you'll observe the law of diminishing returns, and that these things attract parents and students to the district, to be, much like we talk about salaries, I mean, you can't cut to the bone and expect to recruit anybody, similar with programs. I mean, I have, and the reason I, I address this, and I, and I hope that you, that we consider this going forward, is because we all get emails and phone calls from parents who are very, very concerned about eliminating, you know, popular programs and cutting to such a degree. such a degree that you're going to lose bodies and we need bodies in order for the funding. So, I, I just want that to be clear and on the record.
Especially, especially when it comes to areas like fine arts and that, because I can tell you personally, that's one of the reasons why we looked at coming from where we were at out by Hannah City into here, it's because Richwood's had a chorus.
Right.
And that, and when our daughter was going to Notre Dame, it was an optional, it was a class that she could pick up, but it wasn't, she wasn't given class time, she had to take it during lunch and that to even participate in something like that. And because Richwood's offered a chorus as a dedicated class time, that was very important to us and one of the reasons why, why we ended up here. So, do not sell short what Mr. Crawford just brought up because I'm telling you firsthand, it does make a difference.
More focus on operations area versus the curriculum obviously would be more beneficial to students. Then going on to the next area, we have structure and again, we had some ideas there coming from the buildings that we need to investigate further when it talks about any kind of restructuring within Woodruff. Boundary changes and on down, that's more the long-term ideas that were presented and we'll have to look at those individually and again, put numbers to those that make sense. Substitutes have an area of their own, again, because there were several suggestions under that. Permanent subs in buildings makes the finance area think of, but there's benefits with that, so we'd have to look at any kind of cost savings and question that area a little bit more, but just more investigation in that, but there were several different suggestions Training, it seems to be the push within this area was the train-the-trainer model and in fact, we do use that wherever we can, but we can surely look at that and see if there's any areas we're missing. That seems to be the, and then eliminating consultants more and we are looking at that area, but a lot of it comes back to that train-the-trainer model on that. At the bottom, there was the eliminating the tuition reimbursement, that'll be the long-term within the training, that, that is something that would have to be negotiated with the union, but that would be a savings there. Then the final area, revenues. Just pick out a few there, the allowing schools to handle concessions and hold fundraisers within the guidelines of the federal school lunch program, but we, you know, we would definitely have to look at that and make sure we're following the rules if we're understanding that that suggestion properly or correctly. Otherwise, there's the establish a grant search position and to collect outstanding student fees. We had just looked those up today to get totals in the different categories. And then the reducing, the absenteeism, that we were looking at the figures that go with that as well on what that value of every child that's in school each day, what that gives us as far as ADA.
Dr. Lathan, would you address what we, what you found out about the SIG grants for the five schools?
Yes, the five schools, and we talked about this because I think information was shared, that we could receive a waiver as it relates to not removing the leadership if they had been in the schools more than two years, but in order to receive a waiver, there were certain, well, first, let's go back to Peoria High, which was one of the first schools, one of our SIG schools, and Manuel. There is a certain criteria that you have to meet in order to receive a waiver and the state sent an email that stated that in order to do that, there were certain things as it related to academic achievement, so they looked at the baseline of what your achievement was based on PSAE scores prior to implementation of the grant and then at the end, and you had to show a certain amount of increase. And then they also went through and said that like last year, only, I think a school out in Chicago had applied to do that, but then once the results came back in the beginning of the school year, they had to remove the principal. The district had to decide, keep the money or remove the principal. And so, we would still have to follow the same process that we utilized before when we went through the process with Peoria High. Those five schools would go through that process. The only one that might come close could possibly be Manuel because Ms. Young went there last fall, but they would still be going through the entire process to look at basically reconstituting the building and going through the grant application process. And so, we did investigate the SIG and actually had some information that came back from the state that was shared.
Just to follow up on the tightening of student fee requirements, holding parents accountable, Mr. Wilcox and I shared some emails back and forth based on a parent's request on, you know, what, where did these funds go, how, you know, what did we get from the state or federal to offset textbooks? To that question, we, from the state and the federal, we received nothing in terms of what offsets our textbooks or fees. As it stands right now, in the last numbers Mr. Wilcox provided me, we'd received $127,000 across the board that all goes into ed fund. From fees, if you think about it, that's...
Just for the textbook fees?
Right, for textbooks fees. So, if you think about that, at 13,000, say, let's say 13,500 students, that's less than $10 a student and when I think about the fees we paid for our own child in high school, that tells you there were a lot of people out there that aren't paying their textbook fees.
Okay, so stop right there. Go ahead, I know, first of all, if you, if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, free, let's do, let's do separate categories. Free students, students that qualify for free lunch, 100%, cannot be charged a fee. So, you got to subtract those students out. We, huh?
And we're paying for that.
No, I said you're right. We're paying for that, right. Students that qualify for reduced lunch, there's a reduced amount, so we paid $55, I think, for the textbook fees. And so, what's the reduced amount if you qualify?
It's free if you're reduced or free.
It's free if you're, so free or reduced students, they do not pay the fee. So, then the students who do not qualify for free and reduced lunch, they pay the $55. So, let's, let me just go there because I went there in cabinet because we talked about this, because people take my words and twist them. If we're going to charge parents for text, a textbook fee, then I, as a parent, should see those textbooks come home. We should be utilizing, I got some, I got some A-bands up in here, okay? So, I'm just saying, before we go through this and because I do take issue and I'm one of the ones that takes issue, when I arrived here and we were turning parents over to the collection agency, if I need to pay my AMR bill or pay $55 for a textbook, I'm going to pay my AMR bills and keep my lights on. Because we're not holding, and principals know, we've had this conversation, assistant principals and special ed coordinators, I see a few out there and a new principal out there. If we're not holding everyone accountable to making sure that they're utilizing the materials that we've charged parents for, how is it in good conscience that we can turn somebody over to a collection agency when, I know Ms. Superintendent, Mr. Board Member, Ms. Board Member, we haven't gone out and personally made sure that all those materials are going home to students. There are some schools, and we're still dealing with the issue, that don't let them take the books home. And some of you have called me, board members, about certain schools, so have you not? So, I'm just saying, people, it's easy to say, let's hold parents accountable, or these parents don't care. It's not necessary that parents don't care, but we have to make sure that we're monitoring and we're being fair. I told cabinet, I was going to say it when I had the opportunity, I gave everybody a warning, but I have concerns around that and I have concerns and I did see the exchange of the emails when we talk about parents who qualify for free and reduced lunch, that they're basically a burden to us or that, you know, parents who don't qualify have to carry that burden. I, I don't know, like I said, I did not want to go there and try to, but we need to be careful with how we do things, but we also need to know that in a lifetime, when a child achieves a graduation ceremony, whether it's an eighth grade celebration, because some of them, that's where they'll go, and if it's a 12th grade high school, we should not and we used to do that and that is the most discouraging and disheartening thing is on Friday, when we have graduation practice, kids are told they can't participate in graduation because they still owe from $55 from eighth grade.
That's right.
So, I just have a concern, I guess I wanted to keep my mouth closed, but...
Understood, but by the same token, when you hear...
And remind us, can you remind us what, what percentage of our student population is free and reduced lunch, just at ballpark?
It's 64, 65 percent.
So, 65% of our kids, of the 14,000, we don't charge anything for because of their income.
So, how do you look a parent in the eye that's doing the right thing, paying their fees and tell them they've got to pay when you've got that number?
You want to know my, my two cents? I don't think we should be charging those fees, period, but this is what we...
Fair enough, but it, and that's kind of where I'm going is if you're, if you're, if 60% of the students in this district aren't paying anything, why are we charging the other 40% when you got 60%?
It's based on your income.
Yeah, but...
But we don't have to charge it. So, the 137, what'd you say we get, 137,000 this year? We don't have to charge it. That, but that's been a part of our board policy, here are the fees. We do not have to charge that $55,000, $55.
I, I agree, there are, there are families in our district that can afford it, but I'll guarantee you, there are people on the, just above that line that are struggling to, doing the right thing, paying their fees and they're still, and struggling to make it and struggling to pay their bills, but they're doing the right thing. So, how do, how do you look them square in the eye and tell them that they're, they're doing the right thing and thank you, but these are, it's a really hard thing.
That's why we don't charge it to the collection agency, those people who try to do the right, because I agree, I just don't think you should be, we should be charging the fee because there are people, like you said, that still, they don't qualify, but they really can't afford that $55 if you, truth be told, because they also buy uniforms in August and then when school is time to go back and school supplies, so I, I agree with you.
And I remember, I remember when you first came, you said, when you found out people were being charged fees, that it's supposed to be a free public education.
That's right, and I'm still saying that.
Mr. Crawford?
And that's what I was going to say, is that long-term, I would not be dependent on nickel-and-dime fees because, because I think, I think what's going to happen is you're, it's going to be a collection issue. And again, people look at this as like, well, I pay my property taxes for that and so why should I have to pay a fee? Well, if you look at your property taxes, a lot of your property taxes no longer go to education. One in four of every dollar, $1 in every four goes to a pension. So, that's where we're losing out on a lot of these educational, these fees for kids. And maybe why we have to do this now is to, you know, raise fees for extra programs and things.
I think we, I think we have to be careful though, when we, when we, you know, make certain statements, really. It bothers me, I mean, you can't say, if a person qualified for something, you know, they qualify for it for whatever reason, and that doesn't mean they're not doing the right thing, but, but they qualify for it. And I agree that we maybe shouldn't have a fee for anybody, but we have to be careful about, I think, labeling people as, because I would assume that if, if you're doing the right thing, the ones that qualify are not doing the right thing. That's, that's just kind of how I, you know, I would interpret that, but I just think we have to be careful because we have, we have our parents listening to us, just like the public's listening to us.
So, this is the last slide of the first half of this presentation. Just kidding. So, I think we need to continue this discussion, this is a great discussion tonight, we need, continue to need board input on how we put our budget together. We will come back in June for board authority to begin 2016 and give authority for spending in the new fiscal year. In July, we'll try to finalize these budget reduction options. In August, we'll bring a proposed budget for your consideration and hopefully in September, we'll have the approval of the FY16 budget. With that, we're available if there's any further questions.
So, 70, just to clarify, 72.3% of our students are considered free and reduced lunch students. Thank you, Ms. Tan.
Thank you, President Wolfmeyer. I had a couple of questions that are probably a little more general and specific, but based on the reductions we're talking about, what do you see the forecast deficit for the following school year if we retake just the numbers that we have today?
Off the top of my head, I think the ed and O and M deficits were about $12 million and we've probably got $7 million on the table right now.
So, that leaves...
Five million.
So, so we're talking about enough, about a $5 million deficit there, okay. Number two, what state mandates or other obligations that we are told we're supposed to do, can we ignore?
Say that again?
What state mandates that we are told we can do, and I know that school districts, you look at the legislation, there are school districts that petition and request relief from state unfunded mandates. It can be done, it can be passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. If we ask for relief from certain types of state mandates, I would ask us to, to take a look at what those might be and take a look at the list of school districts throughout the state that have asked for that relief and have gotten it from the legislature.
And are they any that will save us, I mean, I'm assuming that you're thinking that they will save us money?
Yeah, if it doesn't cost us anything, but I can't imagine they don't cost us something. But, you know, and this is not every nickel and dime, but this is, are there big things that we are required to do that we could say, "Look, great idea, can't afford it and you guys need to let us off the hook on that," because other school districts do that all the time. Chicago does it, impunity apparently. Okay, number three, based on our current property tax levy, is there any room in any of those levies for us to increase property taxes? Not suggesting that we should, but at the end of the day, we cannot continue to do things that we can't pay for and we either have to stop doing them or find funding to do it.
Are you talking about a referendum?
I'm talking about as we are without a referendum and I know that we can in some circumstances for some purposes and I know that the budget you forecast, does this include the $5 million for health, life, safety?
No, that's off, that's off on the side.
That's off on the, that's the, that's the capital budget, that is not the operating budget, okay. So, what's the, what's the capital budget deficit on top of the operating budget deficit?
In the amended budget, it would have a, revenues exceed expenditures by 4.4 million and in '15, we would end the year with a $2.1 million surplus.
And after the end of '16, what do you think it would be?
Well, we've, we spent $4 million over budget in '15.
Right.
So, if we did that again in '16, we would be in a deficit position.
Okay, and then, and further to that, the working cash fund that we have, you had a cash flow projection that showed us running, running negative cash balances in the early second quarter of next year, is that true?
In May of '16.
And what are the alternatives for us to fund that when we have to do something like that?
Teachers orders, some tax anticipation warrants, short-term debt.
Okay.
So, that, it was a fairly short-term negative cash flow because we have the property taxes coming in in June, I think is what the cash flow projection was.
Okay, I would just note, and this is not a question for you, I looked at the State of Illinois budget for the fiscal year 2016, actually, it's on page 79 if any of you care to look at it, but in 2014, the State of Illinois had 50,085 employees and of course, they've tightened their, their belt and they've managed to find ways to reduce their expenditures for schools, but the State of Illinois will have added 2,490 jobs in 2016. That's a 5% increase in employment. So, while Springfield adds almost 2,500 jobs to their payrolls, we're having to make these very difficult decisions and, and we need to talk to the state legislatures, legislators in this district and this area and say, "Look, you're asking us to make very difficult cuts." We're talking about over 100 people here at least and it has an impact on our students and it has an impact on our ability to provide the services we are required to provide by the State of Illinois. And yet, the State of Illinois decides that it can add 5% to its employment rolls over a period of two years when it's facing huge deficits.
May I suggest, Mr. Floyd, that while I too share a disdain for Illinois government and its current state, they probably are facing the same things that we do in terms of mandates from the federal government in terms of having to add to their employee roles.
Actually, if you take a look at the line items, that's not necessarily the case as I interpret it.
Okay, well, I...
I can show you the numbers right here.
Let me see your...
Here it is. Here it is, right here.
All right.
My point is, the State of Illinois says one thing and asks us to do another.
Right.
Well, I guess, thank you, I guess, no, I, I mean, no, we're not, no, no. Here's a couple of thoughts that I have, as you move forward. I, I know there was some talk of cutting some travel out. I'll be honest with you, and we've done this before, I think we need to put a moratorium on all ed fund travel, unless it's absolutely necessary.
Second the motion.
Absolutely necessary means different things to different people. Um, the other thing, though, with travel, I know a lot of it is in the grants. I think, and I think we are writing grants this summer, or resubmitting grants, we need to look at those grants. And I know there's some things, percentages are required, but we need to look at those grants and start putting more things, and I'm talking Title I in some of the big grants, put more things into things closer to the classroom than necessarily travel for professional development. Um, like I said, I understand there are some requirements for percentages, but I know years ago, when I used to help put together the federal special ed grant, you decided how much you put in for different things, for different areas, depending on what you want to do that year. And I think we need to start looking at putting more money in these Title I budgets to give the schools the flexibility to keep some of these programs and some of the staff they need, if, if that's doable. I've never written, dealt with Title I grants, so I don't know, and that, but I, we need to look at doing that. Rather than hundreds of thousands of dollars for travel, we need to find a way to use that money more in line with the kids in the classrooms. The other thing is, we need to quit feeding everybody. Um, I know, I'm sure last fall, we heard, and it might have been from Mrs. Cruz, that we heard, I think it was more like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a year that we spent. And, well, I, I think she got it from FOIA, so I don't know if it's true or not. We don't, when you have a three-day principal in-service, let him go out to lunch for an hour, let him leave the building. Well, but I, a lot of times, we don't.
No, we move home.
Okay, and those are the kinds of things, it, it may seem like a drop in the bucket, but little drops certainly start adding up pretty soon. Um, and, and I think Mrs. Ross asked this, Sodexo very kindly donates our meals on board night, so we are not paying for those, so we thank them for that. But I think those are some of the things that need to be looked at. Those are the kinds of things that have got to be done before we start increasing class size. And, and I don't know that we can get away from increasing class size, maybe we can't. But I think we can save a whole lot more money on travel than, than, that what we've been doing. Those are just my first, first few thoughts.
And I wanna, I wanna give, I wanna move into, really kinda dovetail on what you said about Sodexo, you know, donating and providing, uh, you know, being a, a good partner in not just taking away, but also, um, giving back to the district, showing that, uh, you know, they wanna be a partner. And you, this meeting that we had with ALLETE, um, I don't see, did that, was that, did that get shared with, uh, I mean, do we talk about this as a board, or did that get shared with the finance people, because what they have in the, in the proposal is still the same?
Yes, they received a copy of it, as well as what we put in the board packet. They received a copy of what was in your board packet.
But I think they were probably waiting for the board discussion on it.
Okay.
I think that's what Carla said, is there had not been any board discussion on it yet, so.
Okay. So then, let's have board discussion on it.
Well, we put this, put this in, in your packets, and, and Mrs. Ross and Dr. Lathan and I sat down with Mr. Cannon and one of his assistants, and this is the proposal that he put forward, um, uh, for the coming year. He, I mean, he had several things in it with, with different solutions, um, but the bottom line is, what his suggestion is, his proposal is to maintain ALLETE's president at Tree Win and Harrison's for a minimum of one more year. Extend the ALLETE presence to Lincoln, beginning with the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, and he feels like he can, he can raise external funding for, to pay for the new school. That's the ba- I mean, financially, that's the basic proposal. Um, he had other ideas, like focus some of the ALLETE professional development with principals and teachers and resource officers, I think that was throughout the district, if I'm not mistaken, and, um, develop a neighborhood ALLETE, so they get involved with parents and neighborhoods, and at parent university, and, and having guest speakers. So, um, you can look at, at these, these are the discussion points that we had in the meeting, and, and, and that's pretty much what his proposal is. Now-
That's at no additional cost.
That's at no, right, so we would get three schools for what we're paying now for two, however, and I'm just putting this out there, it's not a reduction. So, I mean, the external funding would fund, I think, the new school, and we would provide, we would still do what we're already doing at the two old schools, so I just wanna put that out there. But we would be getting three schools for the cost of what we're paying for two. So, and Mrs. Ross, you add what you want.
For the license fee, not for the staff, though. For the license.
No, they're talking about for the third school, the total, and I think he explained that to you. Total cost of everything.
But in order to expand to another school, you have to add staff.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what he was proposing.
And that's what he's saying, he's saying that their external funding will pay for the additional staff at the third school.
For sixteen, seventeen, I just wanted to make sure.
No, for fifteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen.
So there would be no, there would be no reduction in that amount. The proposal doesn't provide for a reduction, but we would add an additional school for that amount that's cost to us. That's what the proposal is. Right.
And, and I guess the, the thing is, I mean, I think when we talk about taking away from children, um, we have everybody identify discipline as a problem. And we're talking about reducing everywhere and cutting everywhere, and the bottom line is, if we are going to be doing this reducing and cutting, and that included, some of those included the schools that are listed here for, we're gonna be doing that, we're gonna need, definitely need, those people that are, uh, managing the behaviors of those children. Otherwise, we're gonna have chaos. We are going to have chaos. And I could see if the, if the project, the schools that have been working, that they've been working with have not, were, were not successful, but they've been successful. And we don't pay anything for the high school, uh, programs, none of the high school programs.
I like ALLETE, and I wanna support it. I think a lot of these discussions will go on after I'm off the board. But one thing that's frustrating for me is that we dedicate a lot of resources to behavior control. And I don't think we do enough to say, "Parents, community, you do us a great service if you could send children to school, and they behaved, and would need something like ALLETE to help them." I mean, I mean, but look, in, in, in dire circumstances, that's the exact kind of message we need. This is, I mean, because I feel there are so many times that we have resources spent, while necessary in many circumstances, have little to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic. It might be getting them to that point, agreed, but spending those resources, we're losing out on classroom instruction, and it's frustrating.
And, and you know, we've been saying that the ten years I've been on the board, we've been saying that for the twenty-seven years before that, that I worked for the district, and you're right, but there, I mean, we've not found a formula-
We just never say it, that's all I'm saying. We always, we always-
Oh, I think we-
If we don't have ALLETE, if we don't have ALLETE, our schools are gonna just, you know, be chaos, as you said, like, why is it, why is that have, I, I, it's frustrating, that is so absolutely critical, we oughta change, if that's the circumstance, that oughta change.
Sure, it's, it should change.
It should, but-
But we have to change the culture of people.
Well, people have to change the culture themselves, though, too.
The interesting thing is, you're, you're echoing the exact words that Judge McDay stated during the ALLETE graduation.
Right.
He said, "This should become an expectation to where we don't require these."
Right, and, and, and to ALLETE's credit, they are changing the culture. And I do think they are building other people that are gonna share the culture with the next generation, which is a great thing, but my point-
What should happen, and what is happening, is totally different, two, two different, things are not the way they, they used to be. And while I, I disagree to some degree with judge, with the judge, I thought that what he had to say at that meeting was, the young people there really felt down about it, 'cause they had worked so hard to be a part of this, and to show that they could do the right thing. And I, I think that this program, and any other program, should be working themselves out of business, by helping to train people, and helping to get people to a point where the culture changes. We can want it all we want, the students are not, I mean, we have the parent university, I pushed for that for five years, we have that, but we need to have those parents-
Get more participation.
We have to have those parents there, if it means getting some outside entity to get those parents there, so they can learn, you know, how to communicate with, with their teachers, how to help their students. We need the parents there, but they're not there, so we have to have surrogates all over the place. I mean, I'm serious, we have a crisis in public education across the country.
Chris, um, I agree, I do agree with you as far as trying to change the culture of, of some of the parents. Um, I guess I look at ALLETE and what they're doing in trying to make an impact, in trying to change the mindset, in trying to instill value, uh, worth and everything in these parents, giving them the understanding of what this is really all about, and trying to, um, trying to get their children, trying to give them something, um, that is going to help lead their children. So ALLETE is doing that, they are out in the community, they are meeting with parents, they are going house to house. So it's just kind of a slow, it's a slow process in those areas that they're in, but they are making a difference.
I, I would agree, and I, and I, I see that, okay? All I'm saying is that I don't think it's said enough from this horseshoe about the responsibility of mom and dad, about the responsibility of the student. We oftentimes say, use the word, or, I'm sorry, use the phrase, "It takes a village." Well, I, you know, I for one wrestle a little bit with that phrase, because I think that says, to me at least, it's somebody else's responsibility, which I don't like. I mean, I mean, to me, it's ultimately the immediate family that, that has responsibility, and then it expands from there. I think, for instance, I think the village, the community of people are kind enough and willing to help, that if, if you ask them and involve them, they're, they're there to do it. I mean, we, for, for, for many of these habitual discipline problems we have in our schools, if they were saying, "You know what, I'm sick and tired of misbehaving today, I want you to help me." I think everyone would greet that with such, with a, with a positive attitude, but frankly, we got some that just don't get it. And I'm saying, they're not getting it because something is not happening at home.
It's great, it's great when you know what to do. When you know what to do. It's another thing, as a parent, when you don't know.
Why don't they know, though, that's the question.
Why don't they know?
They haven't been educated.
Okay, then, I'm hoping the next generation will know, because that's, that's what I'm getting at. The fact that somebody wouldn't know what, just, like, for instance, my, my child is getting ready to go to kindergarten, school is the most important thing in their life, and, and, and that means that they are gonna behave every day, and they are gonna listen to the teacher every day, they are not gonna ever disrespect the teacher. And I, and likewise, I also know there are circumstances where you're gonna encounter in life, you're gonna have a bad teacher that you encounter, and you're gonna say, "You know what, I got treated, I got treated unfairly." Well, what, that's life, move on. Still maintain those good values, still maintain those good behaviors, get the most you can out of school. That's what I, that's where I wanna see our students get to, and I think a vast majority of them do, but at the end of the day, we also know that there are tho- when, when you have somebody disrupting a school, it can infect the entire school. That's why we devote so much in terms of resources to disruptive behavior. I just would like to see it change. I'd like to see the pace pick up a bit.
I think we all would like to see it.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I'm just, you know, I got one meeting left, I gotta get on my cell phone.
The reality is, is what we're dealing with right now, is what we're dealing with right now. As I said, I think we need to, I mean, I've been through, uh, as I've heard from the, from the podium, Edison, all types of programs that have been in place to try and move this district forward. But I'm looking at results. I'm looking at, for, take Harrison School, for instance, every single parent that has a child at Harrison School got a door-to-door, well, a, a home visit, and got a contract of some kind of commitment from that parent. We, we don't have the staff to do that, we don't, we don't have the volunteers to do that. But the point is, if we were, would allow this type of program to be universal, have that training for everybody to be on the same page, we could change the culture, where you, you, everybody speak in the same language.
Robert Butler.
Yes. Um, we had on the slide there, heard about in schools, and where we're cutting back and really trying to work with the train, the trainer model. And my question is, with ALLETE and at Tree Win, how much longer do we need that program at that school? Has there not been some training in staff? Has there not been a culture change in three years that can now impact this? How much longer are we looking at having that program in that school? And again, um, for administration, perhaps we can be helped as well as knowing, as we talk about outcome measures and benefits. I know we all, you know, agree, the culture is changing, and, and we're seeing some things, but what really is on paper in terms of outcomes? Is there more? Um, and I think we've, well, even without the graduation, just as we consider these things, and we're looking at numbers and data and everything with all the other proposals, we need that from ALLETE as well, especially as we're talking about expansion into other schools. So that's just, you know, what I would like to understand, 'cause I thought part of that was to expand it throughout the district, and we would just go from school to school, and maybe not staying at one school, and just keep adding schools on top of that, uh, at that point. So I just wanna more clearly understand what is the, uh, the goal or the strategic plan for the ALLETE program in District one fifty?
Well, and, and Mr. Cannon said, in, in his proposal, to maintain ALLETE's president at Tree Win and Harrison Schools for a minimum of one more year, and I'm not, I don't remember that he gave us a specific reason for that, except continuity.
To be able to train, because of the fact that there's been a lot of turnover-
Okay.
Especially at Tree Win, to be able to train, do the PD and train the staff. Ideally, all the staff should be trained at the same time.
Right.
But I, if, if, if someone comes to us and says, "Okay, I, I will raise the funds, because I believe in this, I will raise the funds to, to do an entire school myself," and we say, "No," what are we, what are we doing?
Well, but the question-
If it doesn't cost, I, I'm not saying that's, that's the bottom of the backend here, we're not talking about the two schools now.
The thing is, I guess, what the board has to decide is, do they, I mean, it adds a school, but do, that does not reduce our cost for ALLETE. So for every dollar we don't cut, it adds to the deficit for the coming year. So, I, I mean, I understand we're getting three schools instead of two, but we're still spending the four hundred thousand dollars. That's what the board has to decide what we wanna do.
That's right.
Mr. Redbird.
Um, this is something that I've been thinking about, as we've been internally talking about ALLETE and the staff, and that is, and I've been looking at, at what documentation exists for the program, and I just wanna throw this in, because I think this is necessary, if we're gonna continue in this program, that there be some, some real definition to it, uh, which does not exist now. There, we do not have a, a contract with, that, that describes ALLETE program. When, when the program was originally set up, it was run through the Park District, and we had a contract with the Park District, and that had some definition, uh, of the program, but, uh, the Park District aspect of it went away, so all we have now is, is a, a license agreement with Mr. Cannon, which is terribly vague. A license generally refers to intellectual property, and I don't know what the intellectual property is. So I think it would be a beneficial exercise- So I think it would be a beneficial exercise for the district and for the program. If, if, if the board decides that it wants to continue the program, that, that a comprehensive contract be drawn up to, to define the program and to define the measurements which will be used to define its success.
Might I add to that discussion? It's my understanding that, number one, the first year at Treewind, they had a bootcamp and sort of a surge at the start. That was not allowed in year two and three, as I understand it, and the professional development there was basically not provided. Additionally, contractually, as I understand it, they were supposed to have access to Skyward. None of their reports or work or documentation goes into Skyward, so that's not in any of our documents that discuss and address behavioral issues. So we've got things that we promised to do with Elite, and they didn't get done. Now, if we're worried about what we're getting for our money, we need to live a part, to our side of the bargain too. And that is, you do the things that were done successfully the first year, and you allow availability of the Skyward system to them so they can document their work.
And I think that's what Mr. Redberg is saying, is to bring some more definition to what the program is about, and, and then we can evaluate what needs to be done. I know there's also the thought of, as we bring things to the table, if we are able to say things have been accomplished at Treewind and maintain Harrison, perhaps, as we talk about a cut, it's not everything, but it is something, as well as all the other things are being considered as well.
Dr. Lathan, how many, how many staff do we still have at Treewind that for Elite that we're paying?
It should have the three, the lead and three staff members. Should be the lead and three staff, and Harrison should have the lead and four staff, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So four at Treewind, and then five, should be five at Harrison, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, even, even from a, an external funding standpoint, if we didn't expand the Lincoln, and he was still able to get the external funding, we could still stay at Treewind and Harrison and still realize some reduction in funding on our side. The question is how, from a long-term perspective, how long can you keep up that external funding to keep it at either those two schools or keep it those two schools for a year and then move it on? But what's, what's the long-term survivability of that type of external funding to be able to offset some of the cost balance? So it's just a question.
It should not be a long-term program. It should not be a long-term program if we're talking about changing cultures and doing the training.
Right. There should be training people during that first year to, to be able to take over so that you can move on.
Well, I think that's what we're saying.
You've got to get to a tipping point where you've got enough momentum going to where this, this becomes self-propagating, self-perpetuating. And we are nowhere near that point where what's going on with Elite can get to that point of being self-perpetuating or self-propagating. So it's going to take more time and more of having it in the, in the district, whether it be two schools and you move it around or however. That's, that's why I'm talking from an external funding standpoint, what's the long-term longevity of that type of funding, because you're going to need this for quite a while. As much as I agree, we should be looking at getting at a model that we're working this out of a job, but until you get to a, to a tipping point where the expectations are set and they are lived daily and, and the culture has changed, it's, it's not going to happen. So need to look at this from a long-term perspective till you get to that tipping point.
But I, I think, in my opinion, it sounds like we're pretty much there at Treewind.
That was going to be my question.
I would disagree with that.
Yeah, Treewind has not been-
I think it's been watered down and it was not done properly the last two years. And the key to this, in my view, is that you use this as a way to train teachers in classroom management and behavior expectations. And until the teachers internalize that and see that as a way to maintain the type of deportment in the school and the building, it will not be successful. It is not, if it's only the extension of one or two people who are there as seen as somewhat temporary, and it's not part of the inbred culture of classroom management, it will not be successful. And I think Mr. Cannon's proposal addresses that in, in what he's trying to get done.
What I, I guess if, if after the three years, and it is still being said there is much more to do at Treewind, then I don't see a need to propose going to another school until you get it right at the one that's there.
It's not because of the lack of ability or effort on the part of the Elite staff. It was cut off at the knees by the administration in that building.
Well, perhaps that's your opinion of what has happened. What I am saying though, if there is a problem with this program being implemented properly, don't move it to another school till you know what you got to do. And for us not to put out this money on it as we're in this deficit, cutting some things that is breaking the hearts and hurting others in many other ways. And I want to come back to another point on that as well. When did it become Elite's profession to train our teachers?
When we have apparently not been able to do it ourselves.
No, but it is not their role to do that, and perhaps that's why there's been problems at the other school, because Elite is not operating in its proper function.
That's right.
Well, that's a matter of opinion.
I, I think you're mistaken.
No, we have hired people for class-
We've always brought in PDs.
Well, what I'm saying, then what is it that really established Elite to take that lead over other training programs and to teach the teachers how to manage their classrooms? That's what I say. I think we do have improper functioning and operation going, and perhaps that's what happened in the school because somebody was trying to do a job they were not hired to come and do.
I think that in- Mr. Redberg?
That's exactly why we need a contract that provides definition. What, what is Elite, what is it supposed to do? What is their role? What is not their role? Where are the boundaries?
Well, this, this program, this program didn't just drop into District 150's lab, okay? Dr. Lathan asked for this program to be in District 150. They didn't come to her.
Well, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying.
What I'm saying, we did have a contract, and for you to say that there has not been a contract-
There was a contract with the Park District.
That's right, and the Park District is, as far as I'm, I remember, is still the fiscal agent for the program.
No, no.
Yes, yes, they are.
Well, see, again, this is, this is another area in which there is not definition.
Because they wanted to have the staff inside.
I, you know, this could be, this could be an absolutely fabulous program, but, but it does need definition.
Can, can-
Mr. Cloyde?
Madam President, can we take this as a matter of, if, if we were to offer a motion that in effect said we had advised the administration to pursue a negotiation for a contract that clears up these issues and put it in some form that we could look at in the next 60 days? Would that help?
Well, I think that this board has to make a decision. Before you do, instruct them to do that, the board, total board has to make a decision on whether or not we want it in three schools or, or what we're going to do with it. I mean, that's, that's the issue. I mean, you, you cannot forget the budget crisis we're having. And, and-
And that, that would be part of that discussion, is the pricing and the number of people.
But you still have to have a decision by this board if we want to move it into a third school.
Well, until you know the cost of all of it, you have no idea.
Well, okay, what do you mean the cost of all of it?
What does the total proposed cost do what he has said he's done? Is there a number on that document?
No, he said he would raise the funds for the third school.
Okay, well, that's what's, that's what negotiations and contracts-
Okay, but the board still has to decide whether or not we want to continue paying the $400 and some thousand dollars to Elite.
But this goes back to what I said before. Instead of expanding it to a third school, if the external funds he raises helps offset some of our costs and we can still keep it at two schools, then that's why he also mentioned the long-term viability of the external funding. Because this is, this is not a, a short-term thing, because cultural change, as much as you might like to think it's going to take a year or two, we're talking generations to make cultural change. And it's going to require a lot of funding and a long-term commitment to this, which goes back to Mr. Redberg's point about contractually putting this thing together, defining what it is, what our expectations is, what the long-term viability of it is, and how we're going to utilize that as a change agent for culture in these schools and make it happen. So.
What is the possibility of, okay, with Treewind, if I remember correctly, when the first year that Elite was at Treewind, the, the numbers, the discipline areas, the training, everything, everything that happened down there was great. In fact, I thought they got, didn't they get some kind of a award or something at Treewind? No? Okay, but Treewind, the first year, it was, it was, it was a great, great program. It just seemed like everyone bought into it from the administration, administrators on. And then after the first year, it just seemed, I don't know, I don't know personally what happened, but it just kind of dwindled. And so now, so then they went over to Harrison. Now Harrison is still thriving, correct? As far as we know?
We don't know, that's what we're saying.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, I thought there's been a great change at Treewind, but I got other people telling us that it's not working at all. And, and it's because of the building administration.
I did not say that. I said it was watered down. And my point is that there's a certain set of expectations and behaviors that were impressed upon the students and the teachers at the start of the first year, and those were never reinforced at the start of the second or third year.
Well, I guess I have a, a wrong concept of how it was supposed to work. I, I thought the first year they were supposed to have the bootcamp and everybody get on board and there was, and you get the rules in place and everything, but if watered down means not having a bootcamp the second year, I never thought it was supposed to have a bootcamp after the first year. Bootcamp is supposed to be the intense, and everything I thought was intense that first year because of the problems they had at Treewind. So I would not have expected the same amount of intenseness the second and third year, and if that's what's watered down, then maybe that's what-
You wouldn't accept, expect it, nobody would expect the same level. But if you had a change and they had a really big turnover in staff, so the staff that went there didn't have-
But then, okay, but then that means, to me, that means PD, but it also means that we're never going to be in a position to really make the stride you need to make if, if every year that much of the staff turns over. And sometimes we can't control that, but then it gets to the, the long-term funding. It's, it, to me, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and if we continue, the program will work, if we continue the, the professional development and all of that kind of thing, but that means then that the cost is never going to go away. And I specifically believed when we first were, had Elite brought to us, was that the idea was they would go in because of a crisis situation pretty much and establish this program that was going to turn things around, which I thought it did, and if you walk into that building, it certainly is a whole lot different than it used to be. But then, once that was done, they would move on to the next trouble spot. But what you're, the way you're describing it to me then is, if we continue to have staff turnover, which you're going to have, it will never be done.
That's just like in any other, anything else that we do. When you bring in new staff, you have to train.
Well, but then the, the problem is, in order to, to work, it's going to have to stay there forever, and we, and that's fine if we think it's worth it, but the cost is never going to go away or, or reduce. I, I mean-
What is our alternative? What program does the district have in place to address these issues in our other schools that don't have Elite?
Parents.
Well, we can't control, unfortunately, we can't control parents. You can talk to your blue in the face, and, and that doesn't happen, but I don't know off the top of my head if there's an alternative, but what we're faced with is, can we afford to keep it ongoing? That's what we're faced with. I mean, we have to decide. I, I mean, I understand, you know, everybody, we want to keep Elite, we want to keep all of the fine arts, we want to keep K through one, class sizes small. We're going to have to do something, I mean, some of these, we don't want to do any of these things, but we're going to have to make the tough decisions to get rid of some of these things, or we're going to have a $14 million deficit.
And I, and I understand that, and I'm not suggesting it be retained in its current form, but there are other things that could be considered as a way to do training and some, some help with the schools that really need behavioral support. Because what we're doing right now, if you look at those discipline reports, it doesn't appear to be working.
Then it sounds to me like what you're proposing is that we completely, we completely change what Elite's doing and not just contain it in one or two schools, but-
And maybe that's, that's why I said, that's a negotiation and a discussion. And, and thinking about it as a, as an approach to a strategy to say, we have schools that have real issues, we can't afford to put that same level of staff intensity in those areas, but we have school resource officers, we have building monitors, we have teachers, we have all of those that impact that and have relationships with those children, and what can we do to help them be consistent in the way they approach this and to set expectations for behavior? That's, that's my point.
And I agree with you, but I guess my question comes back to, what has that got to do with the contract with Elite and what we're going to pay them and where we're going to have it?
Well, because that could be one portion of the solution. It doesn't have to be exactly as it was, but what, what is our alternative to address these issues? We had our strategic planning sessions, and number one issue came out, safety and security. And, and we all understood that and heard that, and frankly, if there's disruption in a classroom, no learning is going to take place during that period of disruption. And it is, it is an epidemic of disruption in some of these schools, and we have got to deal with that in some fashion. And there's, there's no Plan B at this point, that I see.
I would tell you that if, if we had a plan from Elite that did that, it was going to go into seven or eight of our most difficult schools and work with staff on professional development and the SROs and the staff in the buildings, I would have no trouble keeping that $400,000 in the budget.
Well, then that's why you have a discussion and a negotiation, because if that's what we desire, then let's find a way to do that.
But I think-
Go ahead, Mrs. Closkey.
Okay, I, I think that probably what needs to happen is that we sit down with Elite, those, the Elite people, Carl Cannon and those direct people, Sherry Cannon, and, and express exactly what our needs are, what our expectations are, and dialogue and come together with some guidelines of how we really want the program, what needs to happen in these schools. Because all, what's happening now is, is the program is based on the Elite's, what is it, the, the program that he designed to go in and do. So whether or not that was meeting all the expectations that we had, maybe not. So I think that what needs to happen is that we all sit down, you know, a team sit down and let him know what, let him know what the expectations are, what, what our needs are. Discipline's not going away, it's getting worse. So I mean, we, we've got to do something.
So here's my question, is what I'm hearing, at least from some board members right now, is that we, we have a team sit down with Mr. Cannon and find out, rather than the Elite program as we've known it in the past, if we can together come up with a program that will meet the needs of several schools, the discipline in several of the schools, and look at it that way rather than in just one, see, I think that's a great idea. If, if, if Mr.- if Mr. Cannon's willing to do that, Reverend Butler.
Yes, we talk about utilizing some of the funds for long-term effect. I'm just wondering, and as Mr. Cloyde said, what else can we do? When we look at our services in the school that involves counselors, social workers, and different things like that, where can we enhance that part of what we are required to do, that can work with the students as well? So, I think, from going to a, a state board conference, and I brought back some of that information as to what is happening in some of these schools and how they are adding more of that type of support staff through counselors, not only those that are academic counselors, but those who know how to work with families, multi-generational families in the school. So there are answers that are even found at our school board workshops, as how to work with these discipline issues that can really add and enhance our current certified staff that we have.
And, and I understand what you're talking about, but to me, it's apples and oranges. That, that, you're right, we need those kinds of things, but what we're talking about as the discipline in the school, that's hand, you're right, that's hands-on. These are things that are going to work over time, as they work with the children and the families, but, but I'm hearing more of, if we can find out from Mr. Cannon, if Elite, if we can design a different program that will work in many of our schools to help out for the, for the cost of this money. I don't know. I, I certainly think it's worth sitting down and talking to him, because he, if we want to go in that direction, he may have some, some very definite ideas, I don't know.
I can see that where he would still, you know, he could still incorporate some, you know, the ideals, but I think that we need to express what our needs are, and where, where our issues are, and those, those are the issues that need to be dealt with. His philosophy and everything is great, but I guess if we're still having discipline problems, and we need to identify the areas that we need that additional help in, that would be, that would-
I mean, Mr. Bateman?
Well, and, and that goes along with areas of role models, mentorship, and that, because that's a lot of what I also see out of, out of the Elite program, is what that provides when there's, when there's a gap in the core family, where there's not those role models, and there's not that mentorship. Elite's really stepping in and providing that type of, and, don't get me wrong, I believe wholly in the program and that because of those gaps we currently have. But looking long-term, it's how do, how do we structure a program, like we're saying, that provides generational, finally gives us mentorship and, and role models that help bring this cultural change that, that gets us over the hump from a generational standpoint, and starts us on our, on a road of growth and development within, you know, nuclear families and that, so.
I agree. And, and Reverend Butler, the, to respond to what the counselors and everything in school, I, I think that we all had a conversation before in talking about when the counselors were here, and I think that, what, one counselor, one counselor serves like 200 or 300 children at the high school level?
At the high school.
Individually, okay. But is there, there aren't enough counselors to service the needs?
Counselors are essential, because we can't afford to add additional positions that we need, I mean, it's just the issue around funding.
Right, no, I, I understand, but that's what I'm saying, is that, that's where we are, we don't have enough counselors.
But as we look at restructuring funding, that should be something we should look at more closely for, as you said, even the long-term effects, individuals that may be there for a while, and, and working with the families over a long-term time, and, and working as well with the teachers and the administrators of that building as it fits into what our mandates and different things that they can do. Some things may not have been accessible to perhaps what Elite would have liked to done to empower the program, because, you know, of other policies or guidelines or things like that. So, I would say, you know, as we do look at this issue, again, where could we perhaps place some of that other funding, especially if Elite is able to find funding from other resources as well?
So, am I pretty much hearing from board members that you would like for us, whoever the committee winds up being, I know Mrs. Ross wants to be involved in it, and sit down with Mr. Cannon and, and sort of let him know what the discussion was tonight, and see if he has any, his willingness to look at it differently, and, and, and see what his thoughts and ideas would be? Okay?
Just the two of you who are already meeting with him to continue the conversation.
Okay, we could do that, Mrs. Ross and I. Is that, I mean, okay? Okay, that's what we will do with that. So that will stay on hold until we meet again.
Thank you for your presentation and your patience.
Are there, okay, any other things that, that administrators want to bring up as far as we're focused about tonight, any of the new things that are on? I would like to, to mention some of the things on the, that were just the listing, some of the specific things that some of the schools were, were things that came directly from the principal, principal of those schools, and so they are looking very closely at what they can do in their buildings and, and what we can look at. So we'll look forward to you guys coming up with the feasibility and, and what some of those things might be able to save us a cost.
And I had mentioned that earlier to some of the board members, to really be reading those narratives that those principals provided us in regards to the, our financial needs. It's, it's very insightful, and I think they are being genuine and passionate about the need for their buildings and for their own personal well-being as educator in this district. So, it's a lot of it, I know a lot of reading and such as that, but please, just take the time to hear from those building administrators.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 12, 2015 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
To call the roll.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
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 Aye. We are now at audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question and answer session, and it's not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments, once the audience comments are completed. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent guardian or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school. Kenyatta Fisher. Is she gone? Okay. And I apologize if I mispronounced it, Shama St. Louis? Okay. Teri Spayer.
School board, Dr. Lathan, and members of the audience. I understand when programs and staff need to be reviewed with possible reductions in both. This is always unfortunate, because the last thing everybody wants is less of a good thing. That is why I'm here tonight, not as a critic for decisions that need to be made, but as an advocate for positive steps that we can take to improve our arts. The arts have been in a decrease in enrollment at the high school levels over the years, which in my opinion is a result of the inconsistency at the primary and middle school levels. To begin to rebuild the art program, we need to keep our professionals in their fields at the appropriate grade levels to teach the primary basics to, to, of our arts. To align with our specialists in the right schools, in the right classrooms, would hold a stronger foundation, and then everything else would fall into place. To do this right, we need two things. Number one, a fine arts coordinator that understands the arts, and this program, this person could be funded by federal grants. A fine arts program, in my opinion, could be funded through writing grants. There are, in my research, $500,000 that's available in federal grants that will help assist any school district to build, recruit, help, and implement a fine arts program. I, as a fine arts teacher, have this in my heart, in my passion, I do not want to see this go away, I do not want to see this, the demise of the fine arts program, I want to see this build up, because in my own personal life, if it wasn't for the fine arts in District 150, my son would not be where he's at today, nor would my daughter be where she's at today. I see a lot of kids, as I go travel to New York, that are products of District 150, that have done very good things with the fine arts. So, I'm, hasn't used her name, but Mary Beth Meisinger and myself have established a website, it's to save the fine arts for Puria District 150. It's a positive movement, it's not intended to criticize anybody, but I have the people and the means of the inside the community and professionals that have been in the arts over the years, that will step forward, extend a hand, and help you to rebuild the fine arts and find the resources needed. We need to work the problem, we don't need to eliminate the problem, but I know as a professional in the business of the fine arts, that there is money available. I found it for myself, I found it for the schools when I taught schools, so please accept that as an offer.
Thank you.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to digress and go back to the books, the textbook. It's not the textbook fee. 10 years ago, when I was a teacher, at the end of the year, we had to collect textbooks, and each student that didn't turn in a textbook, for example, if they got five textbooks at the beginning of the year and they only turned in one, they were charged for four textbooks, and that was put on a hold, a credit slip. That is a lot more than $55. I mean, we're talking about apples and oranges here. These kids are not turning in the books, and we're simply ignoring the fact, we're not even filling out the form that charges the students for the books anymore. 10 years ago, we did that, and the last five years under Dr. Lathan's leadership hasn't happened. We're building a, I believe, a lounge out here now, is it Dr. Lathan Lounge? With two windows? I mean, we, we got enough money to build a lounge, so that the administrators can go over here and sit in the lounge during the day, with two windows, because they don't want a room with no windows. I mean, come on. You know, we can save that money, and eventually the state's going to say, if you've got money in the building fund, you can put it in the education fund. That's going to happen. They're going to allow you to shift money before it's over with. That's just going to hap, we don't need to spend that money recklessly. Teacher academy, we just talked about the concept of tuition reimbursement. We bargained in a contract, and I bargained to you two or three times. The charge of this central administration, Ms. Lathan, is to have the teacher academy to alleviate the tuition reimbursement problem for the district. I don't think that under Dr. Lathan, we've had one course developed by the central administration who are the educational leaders in this district. The principals are charged to their high schools and their grade schools, and this is central administration's supposed to be developing courses. Instead, we're going to spend here coming up on Avid, we're going to send teachers to Orlando, Florida for $287,000, that's coming up, and then we're going to send the IB people for $74,000 all over the country in the next two months. It makes no sense to me. And I, I agree, Cindy Clark has done a great job with the IB program at Richwoods, but you need to have a, a real study on what it's done at the other city schools for IB. Richwoods has done a great job, but No Place Else has done a great job, I'm going to guarantee you that. And if you do the study, you'll find it out. We're paying for tests for these kids, to take the test, in the advanced placement, we're paying for those tests. You wait and see the results of those tests, we're going to FOIA all this stuff. She's not going to give it to you, but I guarantee you Sharon Cruz is going to give it to you, because she's going to organize it in such a fashion to do Lathan's work. And when you see it, you're going to find out, you're spending money and throwing it down a rat hole. Thank you.
Sharon Cruz.
Will you be voting tonight to spend $368,000 from Title I for summer travel? 163 employees are going to Orlando, Florida for more Avid training. 39 are going for the second time, and 24 are going for the third time. Your thoughts, please? Can you tell us why the Lindbergh modular classrooms are no longer needed, and why they are needed at Thomas Jefferson, if my information is correct? Why did you allow $2,500 to be spent on a remarkable jingle used for the step performance at a board meeting? Instead of blaming the public for not petitioning the state for more money, please put the end of misspending starting tonight, and thank you, Mrs. Wolfmeyer, for your comments, or are you approving what has already been spent for the Avid and IB drips? Now, back to another topic. The discipline policy's goals should be to eliminate classroom disruptions and to teach students that actions have consequences. Mr. Cloyde is satisfied that policies meet state standards, but tonight I heard him admit the policies are not achieving positive results. Last year, only 18 of 203 students experienced what is traditionally labeled as expulsion. Of the 18, nine of them went on to a higher grade in spite of losing from five to 10 months of school. How is that possible, or even beneficial? There was no loss of classroom time for 29 students who were sent to Woodruff Safe School, or the 71 who stayed at the same school in classes through the expulsion and advance program. Even if their probation was revoked, their initial behaviors had no consequences. How do you explain only 12 students, why 12 students were expelled for only June and July? No data was provided as to the current whereabouts of 70 of the expelled students. Did they go to another district, or did they drop out? And again, I repeat, I don't really like expulsion, but you have to have a replacement. The district did not acknowledge a FOIA request as to whether or not the sexual misconduct of 10 students had been reported to the police. Lathan's sarcastic response was that evidently we hadn't read the PJ Star for the last two weeks. Yes, we did. The paper reported a teacher's misconduct, but nothing about students, for whose benefit was your attempted deception. Unwittingly, Lathan proved the ineffectiveness of the district's attempts for online registration. The count generated by the expensive computer program did not agree with the counselor-generated count of Puria High students enrolled in music. Face it, counselors must do what they always did, have much-needed contact with students to discuss their class schedules. Thank you.
Thank you. Armosha Sturdavant.
Good evening, board. I want to, I, I've got some stuff scripted, but I think I'm going to go off of this for just a tad, but I want to address something directly. Good evening, my, once again, my name is, and I want to be quoted, my name's Armosha Sturdavant, from the Puria Black Chamber of Commerce. It says, you are, you are faced with very difficult choices as you work to cut nearly $12 million, which when you came here, Dr. Lathan, I believe it was already $8 million in a deficit budget for the district. You have put everything on the table to be evaluated and have taken a lot of heat for doing so. I applaud you because you had the courage to do that. I, I'm sure you as a board, as board members, have strong feelings about what should stay and what should be cut, but don't we all? The true test, however, is will, will it be your ability to develop a process that will put each program to the test? Now, this is where I'm going to just come from something else that was said earlier. Now, there was a bunch of questions surrounding the 14 positions that have to be cut from Ms. Ross, and that total cost was $345,927, I believe, the numbers were going fast up there. But, we still want to pay Elite $425,000. I believe that problem is real easy math. If we need more assistance in the classrooms, it's a simple mathematical problem. If we need more assistance in the classrooms, it's a simple mathematical problem, then Elite can, I'm going to go back to Dr. Butler's, her comment about it is not the position of Elite to discipline our children, and what is their role? And is it measured? In doctoral school, everything has to be researched and measured for an outcome. What is the measurement to the contract? And has that been checked by Elite? The other thing that I want to point out, in the community, Bytree Win and by the other schools, there's Southside Mission, all of our programs are free, except for Day Camp, and it's not $425,000. And we do teach those children to be disciplined, but also, we also talk to their children. I believe parent university is in place so that we can teach those types of classes to how to discipline your child. That shouldn't come from Elite. Harry Whitaker was my administrator when I was in District 150. He never disciplined me for anything, and it shouldn't be Dr. Lathan's responsibilities or Elite's to teach their teachers to discipline their children. Now, when you're getting your bachelor's, you're taught how to discipline and talk to children. That's what you get your degree, is to ready you for your position in your career. So, that is not the administration here's fault, that the teachers that are here don't know how to discipline the children.
Thank you. Thank you. Tamara Butler.
My name is Tamara Butler, and I'm a school social worker for District 150. So, just real quickly, just to explain what that means, those resources that you're looking for for Elite, I provide that. And I'm pretty sure that my assistant principal and principal that's here can tell you that as a school social worker and school psychologist, those resources regarding behavior and how to teach children how to respond appropriately, that's what we do. So, please utilize us that are in the building right now. I've been with this district for 10 years, and I'm excited because I like working for this district. I'm a product of this district. And I just want to publicly state that, state my support for the current administration and some of the board members. Within the last five years of People Personnel Services Department, which consists of school social workers and school psychologists, we have been given a multitude of professional development opportunities. And for those of you who don't know what that means, Illinois is top, leads in the top with social emotional learning, and we provide those skills here in District 150. And because of those professional development opportunities that we've had, we've been able to come back and implement those skills. The current administration has allowed us to attend local, state, and national conferences to develop those skills, and yes, it does cost money, but it is very beneficial. Some of us have even developed leadership roles within those organizations so that we can come back and give back to our community and this district. It's important for us as educators, also for community members, school board members, and incoming school board members, to understand that learning is not only about math and reading, which I think we discussed earlier with the Elite program, but it's also how a student communicates with others, how they handle stress, how they make decisions that will positively affect them in their future. However, it is very difficult to teach some of these students how to utilize these skills when we have community members that are outright disrespectful and negative, constantly making negative comments to our administration, also to those of us who are in the position. We work very hard to educate our children. It is not just about math and science and English. Many of our students do not have the support that they need at home, and they come to school seeking that knowledge, that support, and that acceptance. So, please take that into consideration when bashing the administration or current school board members and employees. We can only work with what we were given with, and our kids are teachable. In addition, I would also like to thank the current administration for providing opportunities to all students in this district. Last summer, I assisted with a camp at Peoria High School, and there were at least three other camps operating. I was so excited that I took pictures of each sign on the door and bragged about it to my fellow colleagues, school social workers across this state. In my professional opinion, we have some of the best academic opportunities in this state and definitely south of I-80. The number of advanced placement international baccalaureate classes and tests, career development classes such as health occupations, cosmetology, barbering, engineering, culinary arts, and et cetera, is far above some districts of the same size in this state and country. We have provided more opportunities for our students now than ever in our PPS 150 history.
Thank you. Cleveland Thomas.
Good evening, Superintendent and to the board. I'm Cleveland Thomas, Sr. I'm a resident and parent, grandparent of District 150 children. And as I see them growing up and seeing how they matriculate through the system of higher learning, community service, and cooperation, I think we are not willingly focusing upon the failure in many parents and parenting insights that can be learned in off-school locations. And those disciplines are gained, and parenting does require some serious examination of persons. Of course, it does appear that some of these decisions are being hesitant to be taken because of frightened by existing friendships that needs to be severed at a very, very high financial cost. I would urge us to remember that some years ago, almost $10 million was paid out from this school district because of a board who acted irresponsibly and illegally against the superintendent. I think you ought to keep that in mind because these are some matters that would exacerbate our current fiscal responsibility. And I believe, as we see, there can be many who will help children or help the parents lead an example for their children, and that will give us some cooperation. But I'd ask us to stay the course with our current superintendent and with the curriculum, but we need to work on our social skills from parents to children, teachers, and neighbors.
Carrie Hayes. Is she gone? Mary Beth Cunningham.
I'm Mary Beth Cunningham, and I'm at 6219 Eldorado Drive in Peoria. I'm going to talk about what Mr. Spear spoke about earlier, even though he called me by a name I haven't heard in about 10 years. But that's me, the jig is up. That's my old last name. Basically, I did mention before at a past school board meeting how big of a deal Roosevelt Magnet School was to me when I was growing up. I can tell you right now, I wouldn't have gotten educationally where I am today, which is pretty high up there, I think, without the fine and performing arts. I know you guys understand the acceptance of it. I don't want to beat a dead horse and say, hey, listen, the stats show, the research shows 100 points higher on the SAT on average for students who have four years of music and fine arts and performing arts. But that is true. And to, we've had a small bleed that has trickled and trickled and trickled for the last few years in the primary and middle school levels, saying we can't take kids out of class time to put them in orchestra, band, art, choir, that kind of thing. Some schools have had more of this than others. I know that there are discipline issues that are an issue. I get that. However, if you look at it, it's counterintuitive to do that because our academics are higher when we have these programs. Our discipline is better because kids have incentive to do well in class. They want to go to school. Something is of interest to students, including me. That was me. And I went academically a different direction than art, but I still use it as a therapist. I use art as a therapist. I use music as a therapist. I think outside of a box as a therapist, and I fortunately get to see the benefit of it at young ages and older ages. So, I understand enrollment is down, but it is because of issues like that and the fact that grades are not weighted, which we could find a free or pretty close to free, I think, way to weight the grades in high school level. But we don't have the interest in it because we don't start it really young anymore, and that's unfortunate. So, I'm going to urge you, the board, to relook at those issues. We look at what we can do with scheduling to make sure that we can keep including the performing arts. I know you're not cutting it all the way out, but there are cuts, and it's now getting to a point where it's not a trickle anymore. It's flooding. And we need it. We need a healthy music and arts program to keep our kids healthy, to keep the emotions healthy, to keep the community healthy. It's a really cool thing to see kids of all cultures, of all income levels and everything bond and do well and have a common goal and be like, hey, yeah, we all have this interest. Let's do this together. And it bleeds into their academic life, their social life, their psychological life, the discipline and everything. So, if you could just please, I'm lending my support. I would support anybody who wants to talk with me at all times about maybe some brainstorming issues about grants that Mr. Spear talked about, about fundraising. I ate a lot of candy bars that I was supposed to sell going up. I know we still sell candy bars. I mean, I still kind of do, so I'll do anything to help.
Thank you. Cindy Silver.
Hi, I'm Cindy Silver, and, let me fix this. I came here tonight because I wanted to talk to you about some things, and mostly, I wanted to say, I moved here 11 years ago, and we moved here from Connecticut. And I remember doing some research, and I chose District 150 as our place to move because I liked the variety of the programs offered here, and I thought that my kids would get a really excellent education. And I'm glad that I did because my kids have had a really great education up until this point. They've been to Keller, Lindbergh, Washington Gifted, and Richwoods High School. I still have one child who will be a senior at Richwoods. The other two have gone on, and the entire time here, they were in the performing arts program in high school alone. Four years orchestra for all of them. Well, the one's three right now. If we continue to have orchestra, she will be in it next year. And I understand that you're not talking about cutting anything completely out of the schools, but I am a music professional. It's my profession, so there's a lot I do know about it, and some of the things that are happening are causing the arts to be drained. I think the previous speaker spoke about that, that we're not giving it enough support in the middle school level. So, by the time we get to high school, we're having fewer and fewer kids that have the background to be involved in these programs. You have feeder schools in middle school that no longer have some of the programs that you want to support at the high school level. And I see that the fine arts coordinator has been already cut from the budget. So, you're already at a disadvantage for helping coordinate this so that, you know, the middle school programs feed into the high school programs. You know, it's really sad when, you know, I know the most about Richwoods, but I know that some of the middle schools that feed into them, like I think Mark Bills doesn't have band or orchestra anymore, and they feed into Richwoods. You know, so that's just one example how then you wonder why the numbers are down in those programs, you know, and then you end up cutting staff. And the other thing that I wanted to say was that when you take a specialist out of a building, I know that any music, high school music teacher is certified to cover any of the other disciplines, but it's not the same thing. So, it's one thing to have one teacher cover, like, you know, a section of band or orchestra, let's say, an orchestra person covering a band. They can do that, but if you didn't have a band person in the building, there's no one there to teach those kids because that person does not know about band instruments, and the same vice versa for orchestra or with choir. They're only, you know, trained a little bit in that specialty. So, that's another way that we're not, you know, continuing to support the arts when we do stuff like that. I was interested to notice, I saw this when I came in, I turned around while we were going through the long budget thing, and I looked and I saw all these kids with their college dreams. And anyway, I just noticed a lot of them have a lot of dreams, and some of them were to go to some top schools that probably want you to have an arts education. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Love Strand.
Yep, I'm Tracy Love Strand, and I've been a parent in District 150 for 15 years. I still have my third at Richwoods High School as a sophomore. The other two are in college at the University of Chicago. They all have participated in the arts in different ways, and we have been very thankful and very fortunate, and that is a reason why, in addition to the academics that we stayed in the district. But my concern tonight, we have a principal and a vice principal that support our arts, but I feel that our district does not have the organization to support the arts. And what we're starting to see at the high school level is a reduction in the numbers, is utilizing arts professionals in areas that they're not trained to teach. So, for example, and some of them, for example, our band teacher may be asked to do four or five different jobs, and I think we're going to stress him out, and I want to retain our professionals. And I don't want our band teacher having to teach orchestra, and I don't want to lose our orchestra teacher, and I don't, but the other problem is that you take these professionals, and even if they can only stay halftime in the building, and I understand that that may be the case, we are not sending them to the feeder schools. We are sometimes sending them clear across town. And so, they cannot build their programs that way either because they are not present enough, because they don't have relationships to the kids in the feeder schools, and because in our building, they also can't build their programs because they're not present to meet with kids after school. They're not present to meet with them during the lunch hour or a free period. And a lot of what they do is community outreach, and they have to have time to practice and to plan for that. And that is not only in the classroom. That, you know, has to be after school. But if you're at another school in the afternoon, that becomes very challenging for that to ever happen. So, you know, those are some of the reasons why I'm concerned, and especially in light of the budget, that if we don't have better supports in place and an actual director of the arts and, you know, exposure at young age, then a consistent programs at the middle school, and then our most talented teachers should be at the high school, that we are going to lose the arts. And of course, with that would be some of our parents and families who deeply value the arts in addition to all the rest of the education that they, you know, receive in District 150. So, I just say that when we find out about some of those changes very late in the year, it's very hard for parents or students to help make changes or to support a different pathway so that we don't have to lose our arts. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do board members have any responses to the comments tonight? I've got a couple. First of all, we're not building a lounge next door. It's going to be a conference room. We are, we have finally, we're having more and more problems, issues with ADA accessibility to the one upstairs. So, especially with expulsion hearings and things when parents or outsiders come in. So, it's going to be a conference room that can be used by all. If I'm not mistaken, the IB program was never meant to be in all of the high schools. You apply to the program at Richwoods. It's just like the fine arts program at Peoria High. So, that's why it is not available in the other high schools. And then I would like to ask if you would give us, if you could come up with some information or a list of what fine arts are available in the primary and middle schools to give us an idea of what's out there now, so that maybe we can sort of look at that as we look at this budget. Because I totally understand what you're saying about if kids haven't played an instrument in primary or middle school, they're probably not going to start at the high school level. So, if you could just get that information, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Crawford.
I think another thing worth considering, as we heard from Mr. Spear and Mrs. Cunningham about willing to help, I think we once talked about getting the community more involved through having some ad hoc committees that would report back to the school board. I think an arts committee is a great place to start, particularly because we've got to fill in some of these gaps if we are going to be seeing some program reductions. Perhaps starting with the two of them would help. I mean, that's just, I hate to volunteer, you guys, but you did say you would, so, you know, I just think that that would be a good idea so that, look, I mean, you know, let's hope that these tough budget times are temporary and that eventually, I mean, you know, at some point, the state, the state's economy is going to turn around, and frankly, a good economy is probably good for all, including our school district. So, if they could guide us through some of these tough times and keep arts on the forefront and keep it important, I think we can still have a very healthy arts program, particularly if we can fill in some of those gaps with volunteer help.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Ross.
If I could, I would just advise people to make sure you get your facts straight before you stand before the podium and make accusations about- you stand before the podium and make accusations about people and about the district. Just make sure you do your research and get the facts straight. There has been no $10 million suit by a superintendent in this district ever. And I've been here 13 years. There's been no $10 million suit against this district that anybody won. So need just, the information that you're being fed is not correct. It is not correct. So make sure you get your facts straight when you feed people information or when you get information from people. So that's all I have to say about that.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to purchase orders, information items. First one is purchase orders over $2,500. Do we have any questions for Mr. Wilcox on this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reported requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests. Dr. Lathan.
Since our last board meeting report on May 12, 2015, we received four new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, two were filled. There were two pending requests noted on the May 12, 2015 board report. Those were filled. We received 53 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Reverend Butler, would you summarize the gifts to the school district for this evening?
Yes, gifts to the school district this meeting total $7,363. And the proposed action with these gifts is that the following donations that are listed be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors.
Thank you. Consent agenda tonight consists of the gifts to the school district, the payment of bills, the human resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, and discharge of an employee. Payment for travel. Number five is field trip approval. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for manual academy JROTC students to travel to Marseille Training Center in Marseille, Illinois, June 8th through June 12, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. The objective of this trip is to provide cadets an opportunity to practice leadership skills in an unfamiliar environment, participate in citizenship-building exercises, live and interact with peers from other units in a military setting, adventure training, and to live in a hands-on military-type environment. There are no student fees associated with this trip. Item six is a field trip approval for the Peoria High Dance Team. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Peoria High School Dance Team to attend Dance Team Summer Camp at Northern Illinois University de Calbe, Illinois, June 20th through the 23rd, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. No student will be denied attendance due to inability to repay. Seven is a field trip approval, yearbook journalism. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for two Peoria High School students to attend a yearbook journalism training at Illinois College in Jacksonville, Illinois, June 24th through the 26th, per Board Policy 6:240. The two students attending will learn the basic fundamentals of yearbook production. There is no cost to students for this trip. And number eight is the extension of food services contract. The proposed action is that the SEDEXO food service management contract be extended one additional year for the FY 2016 school year. The Illinois State Board of Education determines the percent that the food service contract can increase based on an index, which is the Consumer Price Index, Food Away From Home. The annual rate for December 2014 is a 3.0% increase. Are there any items a board member would like polled for a separate vote?
Travel.
Number four. Any others?
Number four, yeah, and I have questions on the other side.
And I am going to ask to poll number three, the human resources report for a separate vote. Could I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda except for items three and four?
So move.
Questions or comments on the other items?
I do have a question on the field trips. We used to, well, I don't know if we did lately, but we used to determine how much, how do they pay for these field trips when no child is, you know, is denied? Do they pay for that out of their school funds or fundraisers and that kind of thing?
Fundraisers. School activity funds or donations. It just varies. It depends on the particular field trip.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Floyd.
Yes, on item number eight, just the dollar value of the contract for SEDEXO. Okay, and that, just describe what that covers. I think it's helpful to have that discussion or at least explanation. Well, I mean.
I mean, it covers more than just an administrative fee.
Right, that includes the food.
Ms. McKenna.
So forth.
Mackenzie.
It's management, it's management services, but most of the expense is connected to the cost of the food. So thanks for.
That includes the cost of the food.
Right.
And the management services. They've been a great partner since then, and it's a great contract so far.
And am I correct that, since we have this contract with them and the 3% increase, but if for some reason there is a huge spike or increase in food costs, that's not our problem, that's theirs?
Yes, that's something that they manage, is they pay based on the number of fields that they serve. About $2 million breakfasts and like a million and a half, or $2 million lunches and about a million and a half breakfasts.
Okay.
And I would add, they do, they appear to do a very fine job too, but just wanted to put that number on the record. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item three is the human resources report. Could I have a motion and a second on that?
So move.
Second.
I only pulled this because I will be abstaining because of a possible conflict of interest. So would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item four is payment for travel. Could I have a motion and a second?
So, second.
Discussion.
Yes, an information that was shared with board members as it relates to the Title One and Title Two travel. And I understand the concerns as it relates to travel, but I share with you that in June 2014, we submitted our Title One and Title Two plan to the state of how we would utilize the funds as it relates to professional development. That's one component of the plan. It covers positions, I think that came up earlier, about keeping cuts away from the classroom. There's a certain amount that's allotted to positions, a certain amount to professional development, parent involvement. So there's a breakdown. So when we submitted the plan in June 2014, that plan included the Avid training for this summer, and so with that amount. Also, you'll see that every year normally we submit the information in June. We are actually a month early due to the changing of the annual conference. In previous years, it's been in Indianapolis, and so the last year was Indianapolis and Philadelphia, based on the strand that you needed to attend. So this year, the annual conference is only being held in Orlando and Philadelphia.
We can't use Title One or Title Two funds to offset deficits in the end fund.
That is correct.
Will they carry over?
We can carry over. We have a percentage that we can carry over. But what happens is when the state audits us and looks at our plan, if we carry over and we're not following the plan that we submitted to, how we're going to use those funds, it's not looked on favorably. And so that was something that was shared. But then also in our Rising Star Plan that was presented to the board last fall, also it highlighted our professional development as it relates to Avid. We've been discussing FY 16 for a number of months now. FY 16, the deficit, deficits that we're facing will continue to be an issue. But we also have a plan that we need to also get our staff trained. One of the things that I also shared this with board is we were asked last year when we went through the authorization for Mark Bills and Sterling, and we were asked again this past April, is the board, mainly came from asking the board, the superintendent and the board officers that sat in, are you committed to the professional development that will need, be needed to sustain this? The authorization is just the first step, professional development. So if you look at the travel tonight, the staff members that are being, going to, let's say, the IB training, let's look at that first, that's the next step for them. There are several courses, I want to say almost seven to eight courses at Richwoods, as you all seem to be the talk of the flavor tonight, is in order to teach those courses next year, those teachers must go to that training. So if they don't have the training, and we've already pre-registered these courses in our course catalog, then we have another problem. As it relates to Avid, there is a continuing, continuation as it relates to the different strands. So it's not a big place, thing just everyone wants to take a trip. But we do have the buy-in from the school teams of who's going to attend that training. And that has been a focus that we've made a commitment as a district over the last several years that we were going to support our avid thinking and the professional development. So, because I understand the concerns, I heard from several of you Friday and over the weekend, but we also have to continue to be prepared to educate our children and to train our staff. IB training, Avid are kind of the foundations that we're utilizing now, and we are spreading that district-wide. And every year, we've added to the courses, I mean, the classes, the schools, excuse me. We started out the first year with our three highs, two high schools and one K-8 school, then we've added each year. So that was the rationale behind that. But to put it all, and we had this conversation, maybe I think at the last meeting, and there was even a write-up about it, when we put positions in Title One, we're being charged a higher rate than a position that would normally, because the feds allow the state to charge us a certain amount for those positions. But we also have to look at the balance of what's in Title One and what we're doing also district-wide. So that's where the information, the decision to continue to move forward, we are booking travel the way we've always booked professional development and travel. It is booked in advance and play, you know, planned in advance, and then it comes to the board for payment of the bills, basically.
Mr. Floyd.
Question, how many IB students are we dealing with here?
Each year for IB, if we have anywhere in each class, about 125 per class for grade level. Like this year for coming up, we'll have 125 rising ninth graders, I think. Am I off?
If you're within 10.
Okay, she's the math teacher.
Right.
For the incoming, the rising ninth.
The rising ninth, but then it builds each year.
But that does, and we also have the children at the middle school level and the primary school level.
Yes, these, the combination that you see on the travel is the middle schools, it's all of the IB schools and the teachers, but also keep in mind our IB teachers at the high school level. Some of those teachers also teach advanced placement courses. So if you think about even the comments made about fine arts tonight, we have, we stagger what teachers teach. So they don't just teach just maybe a straight IB curriculum or schedule. They have also some advanced placement. They have Avid. I mean, it just depends on what the teacher's certification is.
And the, and the travel to Orlando, that's, that's for the training for Avid, right?
That is for the training for Avid. If you recall, several years ago, when you came on board, one of the things that you charged us with, and we've done every year up until this year, and we did check into chartering a plane, is we chartered a bus, that we transported staff over to Indianapolis every year. Like I say, it's not an option this year. Those are the two locations for the national training.
And they don't hold training anyplace else?
Right, they don't come to us for the training, because that would be great if we could do a train-to-trainer, where they come out to you and everything.
Even with the number of people we're involved, they won't do that?
They're a national organization that, it's just, you know, that they have, they do the annual conference.
How hungry are they?
I mean, we're special, but, well, then, I mean, honestly speaking, it's the question he asks is how hungry are they? But there are a number of districts that are also hungry to make sure that they can implement this, and their students are college-ready and they receive the level of support that's needed. So it kind of works both ways.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
No, I want to say that at the national conference this year, I sat in on a couple of, a couple of the Avid trainings. And I did ask if they would come to the districts, and they did say that they would come to the districts and provide the same training that they have.
Excuse me?
And I, and I am, I am only repeating what they told me. So there were some coordinators in this particular workshop that indicated that they would come to the districts. It just seems to me that it would be, it would be beneficial if, if we're going to spend this kind of money. And I know you said it was 100, was 68, 65,000 over last year.
A little bit over, but more than over.
It's more like 100 and some thousand over, I believe, than last year. But the fact is, I can't see basically why a company would say that they would not provide this training for that kind of money.
But it's multiple strands, and I know Dr. Kennedy, who's our district person, it's multiple, it's different classes, so you're not talking about coming and provide, like Cagan Training, you sat in, this debate, remember, about a month or two ago, Cagan Training at Roland Acres. It's just not one focused area. They're over, how many strands of workshops at the national, at the annual conference?
50, 60. We have our teachers going to the foundations, kindergarten first, foundations third and fourth. It depends on where they are, our administrators, so they administrate, we have them going through the Art of Inquirer. We don't have all of our teachers going through one strand. And they will come to the district, but they're not doing the summer institute, they do path training.
Path training, not the summer institute, which is the annual institute.
They're two days, and they come and they do a specific training, not just one training, one strand. They don't come, because our teachers, like we have, for example, and I'm going to do culturally relevant teaching. Renee, what are you doing? The same one. Cindy, what are you doing? Year two. So a new principal, like Denise Smith, she'll do year one, middle school implementation. So they, it's not that you will have, and then also the benefits of the summer institute, you interact with other districts. So it's not, they can't come here and do the training here for all of our different teams. And the reason we have to go to Orlando, because there are no, no trainings in the Midwest, period. They have several there in California, and when I looked at the flight prices, it was cheaper to go to Orlando than to go to Orlando.
So one question I have is, as, and I think isn't the goal to expand Avid into more and more schools?
Next year, Glen Oak and.
So does that mean that next year, this travel cost, if it would be back in Orlando again, is going to be 60, 70, 80,000 more again?
It just depends on the number of people that, for the school team, so that's a possibility. I mean, worst-case scenario, yes, that's a possibility, because I want to, I'd rather go to a strand than go under.
Okay, my question, my question is, is that, because there's some people that are going to the second, second part.
Could be second, third, it just depends on what strand they have to go to.
Okay, so how many strands are there, and do people initially drop off, where they don't have to attend the classes? Because if it's going to, even if you add two more schools.
But they're starting at ground zero.
Right, they're going to start at ground zero, but if there are three strands, then...
It just depends, they offer a variety, and please correct me, they offer a variety of workshops. So if next year, year after, you say, okay, if only if everybody's been through strands one through three, or the different courses, I'm saying strands, but the different courses, then it depends. But they're going to always, as a summer institute, it's just like when you go to a national conference, it just depends on the need of the individual school based on the data that they've utilized, what they offer as a workshop go. So every year, is there a possibility that a principal or a teacher could possibly go to a different session if they were approved? Yes.
So this includes everyone that's, that is involved with Avid?
People that could go based on their, their summer schedules, because remember, this is a training during the summer. Mm-hmm.
So what you're saying is the numbers could possibly never go down?
That's a possibility. I mean, I'm not going to tell you that they are, but there is a possibility. We, like I say, some schools, but also some schools pay the, for their, pay out of their own title monies to pay for additional staff to go also. So for example, each school, if they're allotted three or four people, some schools would use their PD money to send another four people.
Mr. Crawford.
The travel plans are in place now for ISBE's examination. What about subsequent years?
I guess.
For instance, if we didn't, if we didn't approve travel, it's frowned upon because we've already put it in our plan.
Right, we're getting ready to write our new plan.
What about subsequent plans?
We're writing, we're writing our new plan now as we speak. We're working on our new plan.
The future travel expenses have not been included yet.
No, but there's still a certain amount that has to be devoted to professional development, whether it's local, out of town, or whatever, but we want to make sure our professional development ties to what we plan and what we say we're going to implement in the district.
And I know that that debate will be had, I'm just saying, is there an opportunity to, because it sounds as if some are having some trepidation about approving an expensive travel in light of our budget difficulties. Will there be an opportunity to approve tonight's travel, and then in subsequent years, and including this one coming up, have a discussion about what we're doing in advance before the plan is set, fully knowing that we gave the administration the charge to go do this, but budget circumstances being that they are, I think, maybe being involved in planning process and looking at who's going and who needs to go for future planning purposes, is that available to us?
What is the percentage, you said that, a percentage, what is the percentage of that budget that has to go to PD?
What's the percent? Ten percent.
And what is that in the way of monies?
Seven hundred, about seven hundred thousand dollars.
And the Title I funds are federal?
So there's seven million?
And if...
Right, this is one, again, we're talking about two different budgets, not the ED fund, this is the federal monies that are set aside and designated for certain expenditures.
And if we don't spend it, what happens?
We can roll over, we have carryover, but after that, they start looking, they can come back in and tell us that we have to give it back, or they can take it back. So then we've hurt not only our students, but our teachers and our principals.
I find it ironic that the State Board of Education frowns on us not spending the money they don't give us.
I understand that, but we still have to do what we need to do to make sure we can run our school district and we can provide services we need.
It goes through the ISBE. They treat it as if it's their money. If they're upset about us not spending it, then they treat it as if it's their money. If it's not their concern, they shouldn't be concerned.
We have the charge with following, upholding the rules and regulations of the feds.
Well, yeah. I have another comment.
No, good.
I am very tempted to offer a substitute motion here to strip out all of that funding, pending a Plan B to do it in a more economical way. Now, I'm tempted to do that, and I understand the sensitivity to it, but I am prepared to offer that motion, I don't know whether to go or not, but I would offer that as a thought here. So let's go on to the discussion, but I may offer that as a substitute motion here.
And I think that the problem I had with it was, I just felt like, even though I know it was planned for, and I'm sure, I mean, we don't see what you put in the Title I budget, so, and perhaps I wasn't paying attention, but I don't think I ever realized we were talking two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for one trip, one hundred and sixty-three people. I understand we're adding schools this year, I understand it. I understand it's not out of the ED fund, I understand all of that, but I think going forward, what I would appreciate is, I mean, I'm sure that you've known for a couple of months where it's going to be and when it was going to be, and what the costs were probably going to wind up being, and if that would have been presented to us before everything was set in stone, I just think it would have given us an opportunity to be more comfortable with the expenditure, whether it be asking, why are some people going, why are people going for the third or fourth time? I mean, if, don't get me wrong, if this is a very, a really, an institute to me sounds like it's different than going to a state workshop. Because I go to a state workshop and choose what sessions I want to go to, even if we had one hundred and sixty-three people there, it would not be worth two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, what my experience. Now, if we're saying that these are, I don't have a problem with the first-year strand and the second year and the third year, but then you're telling me that then they just sort of like pull electives out, and that's my question is, at some point, we can't keep building this number. And it sounds to me like this number is going to keep getting bigger and bigger every year, and whether it's Title I funds or federal funds or what, there's got to be, and I think I just would have appreciated not just seeing it on the report all of a sudden, but even if it's supposed to be a reminder a couple of months ahead of time, so we could have asked the question, why can't it come here? There was a good answer to that. Or who all is going, why are they going, why are people going three and four years in a row? But it sounds to me like if people see a workshop they want to go to, they'll still be going to this thing ten years from now. So, I mean, those are just the kinds of concerns I had with it. I just, it's, and it was very, and I know you don't control the timing, it was very unfortunate for us to approve two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for one trip on a night where we're talking about increasing class sizes, eliminating important programs, and I understand it doesn't have, one thing doesn't have to do with the other, I totally understand that, but it's still very difficult when we've laid off a hundred people that we're going to spend two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to send a bunch of people to Orlando. I just, I'm struggling with it, I'm really struggling with it.
But also keep in mind, I shared with you that in March, when the registration opened, we were also doing reduction in force and looking at position control. We needed to know who's going to be in what buildings as we completed those registrations. We've had some resignations, and we've had to switch people out, so there are a lot of factors that go in. This process, though, was also followed, the same way we followed other processes and travels, and when information has been presented, so if it sounds like we're changing the process that we're going to utilize as it relates to travel or additional reminders along the way, that's what it sounds like to me, because I just want to make sure I have my mindset of what we need to do.
Maybe that's what I'm asking for, but when it's something this large, I don't think that's too much to ask. I'm not asking that on every single travel that comes along, but something this large, and I looked back, and it may only be a sixty thousand dollar increase over both IB and Avid, but last year, the Avid total for this trip, unless they were on multiple dates, was like a hundred and sixty-three thousand, so that's more than a sixty thousand dollar increase. And my concern is, okay, so we add two schools, then is it going to go up a hundred and twenty thousand next year? And even though it's Title I money, and you have to use a certain amount for professional development, at some point, we're going to be taking money away from the schools to use for the kids in the classroom in order to send people to training, and I don't know where that point, where we reach that point.
Are you saying that the registration for this training was in March?
It opened up, registration opened in March.
And are people registered already?
We registered now, yes, once we realized who was going to be where, we started doing the registration.
See, and that's what we had a few years back, when we said that there shouldn't be any registrations and/or arrangements made until after it's approved by the board.
Just for board members?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, that was for everybody. That was a big issue here in this district.
Because we... The issue I remember was around board member travel. If that's the case, then all these travel improvements for payment that you've been doing, we've been doing them the same way. So this started several years ago.
It did start several years ago, that, I mean, what's the use of having a board to vote on something if it's already been done?
Well, that's the way, I mean, I'm just telling you, that's what we've been doing, and that's what's been submitted to you, is the payment for the travel, not payment for approval of travel, because it says it's payment, but it hasn't changed. The only thing changed, from my understanding, was how board members' travel was going to be handled.
No, our minutes would show that, though, I mean, would show that that was something that came up, because the problem was, before it was approved, people were already making their, and that's been within the last five years, if I remember correctly. People are already making their plans and that, and as if we were going, it was just a few years ago that that came up.
I'm thinking, trying to think it through, so Mrs. Bastian, and just using the board as an example, and we go to the conferences we do, you make arrangements before you get the money, right?
No.
Not anymore?
Not for board members.
Oh, yeah, for board members, okay.
But that's what it means, we were at Lincoln three years ago, when it came up about a board, about board members' travel, and that's when the process changed.
No, but our records would show that that was supposed to be the process, because we had a problem with trainings being arranged before they were okay by the board.
If that's the process, then for years, this is the process we've been through. So if the process changed, we've been under the old process.
Being what? Well, and I don't know if, I don't know if we formally change it, but I do know that in the last five years, there have been instances that have come up that we have questioned travel and had to go ahead and say, pay it, because the arrangements have been made, the tickets have been paid for and all that, and I thought, and I thought we questioned that, and not just for board, I thought we, that happened with regular employees, and I thought we, maybe all we did was voice some concern over that process. I don't remember if we took action or changed the process or not, but...
That'd be easy enough to see.
I don't know. Mr. Bateman?
As we look ahead to next year's planning for, because what I'm hearing is concerns about this thing continuing to blossom, is there a way we can look at, you know, okay, we're going to cap it, we're not going to do, allow any more than X to go, and then you look at who needs to attend their strands, and they have priority, because those strands build one on another, then that eliminates, if you fill up all your slots based on strand attendance and that, then that eliminates all these, well, I kind of wanted to go to that, but since all the slots are filled, then can't go this year, maybe I'll look at next year. So if we would just, as we look at the plan looking forward, I would strongly encourage us to say, set a maximum amount, this is all we're going to send, and then, you know, have a priority based on, and I think it sounds like strand training's the priority because of the building and that, and then we go from there, but that's just my opinion. Thoughts?
I agree with you. As Ms. Wolfmeyer was saying, she was concerned and uncomfortable with the amount, and when it's going to be a large amount, let the board know, but I think there needs to be, as we talked about definition in another area of matter tonight, likewise, when is to define the large amount? And therefore, we are giving a clear directive when we want to be cued in on an amount that might be uncomfortable for some.
Mr. Cloyde?
I think one of the things that we're struggling with here is that commitments are made to programs, but the long-tail impact of it financially is not really defined. And I did a lot of projects where I had to do five-year discounted cash flows or ten-year cash flows, that said, this is what we're going to spend over a period of time, and when you make a commitment to do something, you need to see that entire picture, not just this year. And had I submitted a one-year budget, it would have been like, okay, and then what's next, and next, and next? And you just can't, in business, you cannot do a one-year budget and say, well, next year, we'll see what happens. So there needs to be an approach to this that says, anytime we make a commitment or we have an existing commitment that has a substantial, and I'm not talking about trivial, but substantial long-tail expense that grows over a period of time, we need to see a much longer picture of that than just one year. And I know, you know what I'm talking about, Mark, in terms of a discounted cash flow structure, and you do it with capital projects, and when you're dealing with something of this magnitude, which grows beyond what our expectations were, it really would help to have that.
And I guess I would just like to say, and I've said all along, that any training, anything that we do, how is that measured as far as the benefits of the training? Do we get a report back where... I'm sorry, did you say something to me?
No, I did speak out of turn, I did do that, so I apologize to the board.
Were you speaking to me?
I was speaking about outcomes and measures. Sometimes we decide we have to measure something.
I'm sorry, we're out of order. Are you done, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
I will not be offering a substitute motion, but I'm really not happy about voting for this.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford? Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
No.
Mr. Cloyde?
No.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye. That brings us to deliberation, agenda, and discipline.
Expulsions, expulsions listed on the report dated May 26, 2015, be approved as amended.
Second.
Let's call the roll.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Students expelled by the board are referred to by number thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. Item number 10, revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. Proposed action that the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated May 26, 2015, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to presentation and suggestions by board members, are there any tonight? Mr. Crawford?
Come up with a figure that constitutes larger travel, so that, because I too felt a little bit, wow, this is a lot, and now having seen that Avid is going to be a big thing that we're going to have to face, you know, it's just going, it appears it's going to grow in cost, I mean, we need to know what we're facing. But I voted for it, because it sounded as if some of the money was already out the door, and we already made commitments, I'm not going to go back on those, but maybe that's communicated during the discussion, but I thought it was worth repeating.
Okay. Anything else, presentation or suggestions by board members? Reports from board committees. Mr. Cloyde?
We have a policy committee meeting scheduled for Thursday morning, and I believe Ms. Kostic has a conflict, and I don't know if we can delay it for an hour and a half or so, if that's possible, with our reporting requirements. It's set for 9:30 on Thursday morning, we would probably convene around 11:00, if that's possible, it was posted for 9:30.
I know I have a number of things scheduled, I can go back and change it, and check my schedule.
Well, okay.
Forty-eight hours.
The question is that the posting requirement to change the time.
Well, technically, the meeting is not a formal meeting, because there's only two board members there, so the posting requirements, I think, are done as a public service rather than as a requirement. But I can, I mean, if I can go back to my office and look at my schedule, or get my phone on, I might be able, I shut my phone off, because my battery was dying.
Can we do that after the meeting? Is there a way we could post that, to change that, at least a notice of it? Usually nobody attends, but the members of the committee, but let's, if we can do that and not be in violation of the posting requirement, that's the other thing. I really can't do it much past that date, so maybe on Friday, but that's about it. So...
Okay, you'll check on that, then after the meeting?
We'll convene another...
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Thank you.
Yes, the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, the minutes for the final meeting, Mrs. Bastian will email to all of you all, and to those who are on the committee. Again, we had our last meeting in April, and those minutes are available now. Again, we had our last meeting in April, and those minutes are available now.
Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.